Welcome everyone to the April 3rd meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Please take note of the exits around the room in case of emergency or mishap and now join me as we salute the American flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Reminder that tonight there are no public hearings, we're strictly in workshop mode. The first item on the agenda is Athanas East Solar Farm. We've had a new submission in the interim since our last meeting and if I can summarize, we are ready to move forward for SEACR classification and circulation. But in the meantime, I'll turn it over to you guys to go through the latest set of plans.
Oh, sure. We've made best efforts to respond to all of the comments that we received for this site. You have, I think, the full, the full plan set. You see that we have added a landscape plan as requested. We added substantial quantities of vegetative screening as discussed at the last meeting. Responded to other comments. I guess we would want to see what additional questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Dana. Let me start with our consultants as always. Ms. Axelson, we just received a comment memo?
Yes, sorry to blindside the board with a 5:00 PM memo.
It's quite alright.
Had wanted to get it to you earlier. This application's in pretty good shape. Most of our questions are pretty technical. We did notice that there's a fence surrounding Array A1.1 and Array 1.2. It's in the southwest corner, let's see, the northeast corner of Array 1.1 and southeast, southwest corner of 1.2 and they're in the minimum setback area, meaning the array maybe, corner of the array, part of the fence are in the setback. So those either need to be moved back or you would need variances.
Is it property line setback?
Yes.
Not the side yard setbacks.
Okay, yeah, alright.
And then we have questions about maximum impervious coverage, just to get some clarity, but based on calculating kind of back and forth with whatever numbers we had, it looks like the impervious area coverage requirement is met, they're below that. Let's see. We don't yet have a decommissioning agreement, but we have, the decommissioning plan has detailed notation, et cetera, so I made some comments about moving one of those notes up. So you'll see that.
Okay.
And then, just some zoning clarification type comments. And then the habitat assessment report has some restrictive barrier mitigation measures on page eight and we noticed that you had put a lot of the Blandings turtles and other types of mitigative notation on the plans, but that particular set of notes wasn't in there.
Okay.
The restrictive barrier fence, so I'm suggesting that on sheet C001 where you have all the other notation, to add that. And the planning board would like to see some kind of a more specific timeframe for mowing.
Okay.
Yes, it says quote unquote reasonable timeframe and with the solar arrays we've approved thus far, or like once in the spring, once in the summer, something more than just reasonable, because that's very subjective.
Okay. And our engineer is reviewing the SWIP and will get that out. And otherwise, I know that when I took a look at this, it looked like enough comments had been addressed that it looked like this is ready to circulate for lead and make a referral.
As I said, I believe we're prepared to do so tonight. Thank you, Ms. Axelson. Mr. Zataro, any comments?
Liz, Liz already touched on that. I'll just be working with our engineer to make sure that we review the revised stormwater pollution prevention plan. Other than that, Liz pretty much has covered it all.
Thank you. Ms. Paul Doro?
I believe we've cleared up the issue with ownership now. The applicant today provided a bunch of documents and resolutions and we're working with Joanne now to transfer the escrow to the appropriate applicant. For those that aren't in the loop, there was an administrative error and MAP Energy Funding Solutions is not the applicant, actually the resolution here will have to be updated.
Yes.
To say New York Solar 1000. So that seems to be sorted out, although we're still waiting on the new applications and new EAFs.
I have, I have a packet of new applications.
Okay.
That I can provide for tonight.
And the owner authorizations.
Yeah, the owners should be here tonight, so we've got the documentation for him to sign.
Okay, good.
Who's the correct applicant?
Can you, one of you will each need to use the microphone, because we can't hear you, sorry.
The owner should be here this evening, so we should get, we've got the documentation for him to sign, which we can hand over tonight.
Great, thank you.
And I also have a revised set of applications with the new corporate identity that I can leave tonight.
Thank you, thank you. Anything else, Victoria?
This application requires referral to the Dutchess County Planning Board and because it's in an ag district and it's more than 2.5 acres of disturbance, it becomes a type one action.
Automatically.
I'm going to read your suggestions.
Yes, can you give us the new owner? We can change the resolution right now? Is it the actual owner? I believe-
New York Solar 1000.
1000?
LLC.
I did have it right that I wrote down here, yes. NY Solar.
I got it. LLC, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I mark it up to right?
Sure.
Please do, sorry. You know, these were drafted before we got the new information today.
Correct. So let me start, let me start from my right. Ms. Denaple, any comments?
Thank you for increasing the landscaping, it's greatly appreciated, appreciated, and thank you for continuing to work with your project in Hyde Park. And at the moment, that, those are my only comments.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
I'll second that. Thank you for adding that screening and continuing your efforts here in Hyde Park. Thank you.
Ms. Wasser?
I do not have additional comments, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Pickett?
No additional comments.
Ms. Weiser?
And I echo my colleague's comments, thank you very much for-
Okay, so you can tell this is one of the easiest sites to develop for this particular proposed use. Let me add my own comments, in addition to clarifying the mowing. I wasn't sure, is your leased area, does that include the access here? Is this leased or will this be accomplished by an easement or what?
No, I believe that is leased.
It is leased.
You're gonna have to use a microphone, I won't go in here.
So, I believe that is leased, sorry.
Pull it close to you.
Yeah. Just please confirm that for us, then. So question, I visited the site, I walked it completely, I mean this and Creamshire are two easiest sites, but this, the slopes rise rather steeply here. There's no grading shown, so you're just going to mount your solar arrays up on steep slopes? Is that, is that it?
Ideally, we would like to try and sort of keep it as level as possible.
Then you'll be needing to show some grading, because the site goes like that in the rear. And I believe it's mostly rock. I'm talking about on A1.2 and through here, there's a, there's a big rise in your slope and through here, your grade, and without showing grading, it seems as though you'd be trying to pin everything into rock itself, rather than bury it into soil.
Okay, I will, I will look into that, yeah.
Please do, thank you.
And if they're on a slope, they shade each other, right?
Right, that's, that's the thing we were, okay. Well, at the moment, the area, the areas in through here are relatively flat. You have some slope rise over here and some steep slope over here. This is the area you would need to pull back from, so perhaps you can avoid some of the slopes. This you'll need to kind of figure out, this is also shown in the setback. In addition, in Ms. Axelson's comment letter, she points out that you label the fence at sometimes at 7.5 feet, other times at six feet. It needs to be consistent and not only would you need a variance to put the solar array panels as well as the fence in the setback, you'd also need, believe it or not, a height variance, I believe. Ms. Paul Doro, fences along property lines can only be, or within the setbacks must be six feet, except that our law says this has to be seven and a half feet, so-
So I, I think-
Does that trump-
The variance for the setback might subsume the height variance or it might, it might be a variance for both.
Okay.
Because if it's not within the setback, it can be higher.
Right.
When you're within the setback, you're limited to six feet.
So if you have to go, in other words, the way the variance, that would apply for both. Then in the decommissioning agreement, we need to have price estimates shown for what the, what the actual cost would be. This will help us establish what the likely costs are. I believe I bet you this tease will apply to all of your projects, your three projects. In general, the way the law is written, we would be able to recommend that the town board either have a bond posted or create an agreement for the decommissioning. The board has thus far been consistent in saying that there's no reason to post a bond because the lifespan of these particular solar arrays is 20-plus years. You have to renew a bond every year and it seems to add to your cost. So what we've been recommending is a three-way agreement that would be between the town, the applicant, and the site owner. In this case, Mr. Athanas, I guess, New York Solar 1000, and then as well as the town. What that would do is you would then discuss what you would have to do to decommission if it ever becomes out of use for a year. The town would then have the right to come in and change, or decommission the site if you did not do it, and then charge the money expended to a tax lien to the property owner. That's what we've been doing in general, like we think it's fair for you guys in general. And we've normally had a narrative about the decommissioning agreement that kind of becomes the basis for the legal agreement itself. That's up to you, but that seems like that's a prudent thing to do. I don't know if you're working with an attorney yet, but that might be something that he or she could draft up for you. Otherwise, I don't have any comments either. Anybody else? Nope? Who has this applic-, oh, I know who has this application, yes.
Yes, I do. Okay, just before I read, I want to clarify the first line. I'm not going to read the words. Whereas the applicant is still MAP Energy Funding Solutions on behalf of owner, New York Solar 1000 LLC.
No. The applicant is New York Solar 1000 comma LLC on behalf of owner, Thomas Savinas.
Okay, well, I really messed that up.
No?
Well, no.
It's just like this.
Yeah, but I made marks.
That's okay, we'll clean it up.
That's fine, we'll clean it up later. Okay, thanks. Resolution classifying the action declaring intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review and referring the action to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development, Athanas East Solar Farm, April 3rd, 2019, Resolution 2018-12. Whereas, 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 whereas-
You don't have to repeat them all, I promise.
I don't?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as a type one action under SEACRA. Two, declares its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinated review of the project and directs its secretary to circulate notice of its intent to all other involved and interested agencies. And three, directs its secretary to refer the application to the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to section 239M of the General Municipal Law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And making a motion to set the public hearing for May 1st.
Is that moved? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you don't have to leave, we're just going to switch folders for you to go to the next application.
Well, just real quick, the way that we do the SEACR circulation here is that you'll have to submit packets in envelopes, pre-addressed, for Ms. Whitman to send out-
Okay.
-with the application, EAF, and the materials.
Chris?
Okay. I know, we'll just-
Joan's not going anywhere.
So we'll figure it out.
Just for the record, we're referring this to the Department of Environmental Conservation, NICE, NICE RDA, the Office of Historic Preservation, as well as Department of Transportation. It's not clear to us whether DOT will allow you to use the ref'd out road that's there for actual construction vehicles, so, and this will clarify it for you.
There was a second page, also Roosevelt Fire District, the Town Board, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Conservation Advisory Committee, the Fire Inspector, Central Hudson, and the School District.
I seem to not have that on my list.
It was, it's the second page, so you may just be missing that page.
I am. Oh, no, there it is, sorry. Thank you very much. The next application is Athanas West. This, in all candor, is a much more difficult site for you to be developing. You're in a floodway, you're in DEC-regulated wetlands, you are in a site of somewhat historic interest, but in the meantime, you did make some changes, so again, let me, Ms. Dana, turn the microphone back over to you and you can highlight what changes were made.
Well, since we last saw you in early December, as you know, SHPO expressed interest in the site and a phase one study was conducted on both Athanas sites, actually. SHPO found the findings from Athanas East to be of no significance and so that, that was released, but they did find a site of historic interest on Athanas West. They named it the Smith Farmstead and it includes barn ruins, the foundation of a residence, and ground evidence, no long, nothing above grade, but of an outbuilding. So they established the boundaries of the Farmstead site and said we needed to either conduct additional study, do a phase two, or develop an avoidance plan. And the applicant elected to avoid the cultural resources, so the boundary of Array A1.1 was modified to skirt around the foundation and outbuilding sites. We will fence around the barn ruins and otherwise not disturb them. We will use ballasted support systems rather than the typical racking systems for arrays that are located within the boundaries of the Farmstead site. Now, the back on flood plain and stormwater permit issues was just received from Ms. Moss recently, so we are working to address that now. So, you know, that came after we had filed these, these plans, so these do not reflect response to, to those concerns, but that's, I guess, the major, the majors have been done. As Mr. Dupree mentioned, permit applications have been made for the wetlands, both to DEC and to the Army Corps of Engineers.
Thank you. Ms. Axelson, yes, you're ready to go, I see.
I'm ready to go. I wanted to have memo ready for the board and, and for the applicant representatives, but had some administrative issues to deal with this week. So as Michael noted, this is a little more complicated. We did find out mainly because Tad pointed this out, I'm going to give you a map. There, there is a stream, an actual stream, classified C, running through, I guess it's running from west to east into Crum Elbow.
Right in through here, I believe.
We, we have on the map, there's, it's identified as a, as a wetland, as an, you know, ACO wetland, but we weren't aware there was a stream. Wish I'd caught that earlier. The town's zoning requires a 100-foot corridor on either side of the stream.
Where disturbance allowed without a variance.
Right, no disturbance allowed. And so it kind of brings us back to where we were earlier in this application. I'm just going to put that aside for a second. When, when I sat with a few board members and we looked at the layout of the archaeological and the AV1 sheet, the archaeological avoidance plan, okay. And some concerns came up about the fact that there seems to be a certain amount of overhang of actual solar panels, one over a stone wall, and also kind of in the area that's fenced in that's archaeologically sensitive. While I understand that there's a sign-off from New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation, ultimately, the planning board's the lead agency and so they're not comfortable with how that's laid out in recognition of those archaeologically sensitive areas. And so as we're reviewing this, looking at the need for that stream corridor and the AV1 plan sheet, I basically came back to some of the comments that we had last time that had to do with, for example, once you put in that 100-foot corridor, you're going to have to take a, a big chunk off of Array A1.2, the sort of northern part of it is going to have to get pushed back. And A1.3, which is kind of the smaller array, I, I mean, I, I can't see how that's going to fit. And then also A1.1, similarly, the southern part of it, will have to be pushed up. And it kind of gets back to the comment that we had made about possibly eliminating A1.3, reconfiguring or reducing A1.2 and adding more to A1.1 to sort of compensate. Now, I know you have a leased area issue on this site, but it may be worth going back to your client and speaking with them because these constraints are things that the planning board really must consider and really must ask you to reconfigure this, to deal with those environmental concerns. And also, it's a zoning requirement regarding the stream. Also on this one, there's a fence in the setback on the southern part of A1.2, again, it's that, it's, it just dips into the 25-foot, what I believe is a side yard there. So you would either have to relocate that southern line of A1.2 to get the fence out of that side yard setback.
Wait a second.
Yes, please.
Don't we also have the 100-foot stream setback for the Crum Elbow also, in addition to the intermittent stream?
Yes. Temple side, A1.1.
Yes, but I think that the, right, but I think that the Crum Elbow is further over.
No.
Oh, no, that's an issue too.
They don't show the line. So part of the issue here is that your survey doesn't show the, the stream. And so if you go into the town code, there's a definition for stream corridor, you'll see how they define the measurement from the stream corridor, so when you go out and resurvey, you'll have to be sure, I think it's the high watermark.
It is the high watermark.
So you'll have to be sure to, to show, locate and show us the high watermark on the survey so that we can see where the setbacks lie.
So it's important to just note for the record that the reason why this is in the actual definition of stream corridor, that the 100-foot on either side must be left intact, is two reasons. One, we know that lots of people, when they live on a stream or a creek or a hill, like to cut everything down so they can see more of the water and then complain when they get floods because there's no vegetation there to help absorb the water, to wick it up in the first place. So that's, it's a way to ensure that we have better stormwater, natural stormwater management. But also, streams tend to be where species will migrate through, so it's a way to provide an open space corridor for the movement of animals, particularly threatened, endangered, rare species, at which you're in a critical environmental area as well, as you know. And I helped map that CEA myself, along with Ms. Dexter, who's absent tonight. So we're aware of sort of how rich the ecological system is in this area, which is why I said at the outset, this is a very difficult area to develop. Now that we know that there's a stream in through here and that you'd have to, I mean, you can get a variance from the ZBA to do the disturbance, but I haven't seen one given since I joined 14 years ago and this code was put in that language then, because the ZBA and the town, and that's the Conservation Advisory Council, have all considered it very important to keep, again, these open space areas for the movement, migration of animals and also for flood protection. Yes?
Oh, I was noting that this would, this would, the zoning board has considered smaller encroachments, but because of the size of the-
This would be a full encroachment, that's what I'm saying.
You know, huge, a huge variance.
Yeah, so-
And I don't know if we gave you the zoning citation, but there is one more issue on this I just want to point out.
Okay.
Pretty sure. That sound right? But there is one more issue. So I went back to the wetland and wildlife report and it doesn't reflect this stream and it's a, so we have the Class C stream running from west to east into the creek and then we have the Class A-
I thought that the stream took the classification of, it was a tributary, I thought it took the classification of the water it's simting into the-
Well, maybe, but on the EAF mapper, it shows up as Class C and Class AT, I'm pretty sure.
Class AT would be the Crum Elbow, this is Class C.
Right. Yep. So the, the habitat assessment and, and wetland report really should be updated to reflect that and to reflect the town's restrictions on development within 100 feet of the stream. And I know I have other issues, but those, those are the big ones and I just, you know, I, I will, sorry again, I will produce a review memo, but it is not ready to circulate for lead agency.
I'm sorry, what was the site?
What were you citing in 108-4.3G2?
The restriction on construction near a stream.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Axelson. Mr. Zataro, any comments?
The only other thing is that obviously the, the Crum Elbow being a Class, Class A will also have to, if there's going to be updated survey information, we'll just have to see whether they would also need a stream disturbance permit from the Department of Environmental Conservation. Usually it's anything within 50 feet of the defined banks of the stream, so.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
Ms. Paul Doro?
I agree with Liz, but this application is not ready for circulation tonight, but given that you're expected to be lead agency for the SEACR review, you may want to consider hiring your own wetlands consultant, just because of the, the amount of wetlands and the stream corridor and the potential impact so that you can assess it. And if it does go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, they will be relying on you to make that determination. So you have the ability to hire your own wetlands consultant with an escrow established by the applicant to peer review the information they've provided. Also, you can consider whether you agree with their mitigation on impacts of archaeological resources or if you require additional mitigation.
Thank you. So before we, I asked for comments from the board, just because we have some newer members, in the past when we've, so this is again in a critical environmental area, it's known to support a variety of species, including endangered, threatened, and rare. In the past, the board has hired a variety of different environmental consultants. We've hired Eric Kiviat at one point on, I believe, I forget the name of it, Mr. Ringler's property of-
Coveview.
Coveview, thank you. At times, and in this instance, you kind of have a confluence of big events, because you've got the stream that goes elsewhere, you've got an ETR species and you've got wetlands, all of which would be potentially impacted in a way that I don't know by the installation of the solar panels. Now, one of the reasons why I wasn't going to recommend it immediately was the, I wanted to make sure that the applicants were able to hear our concerns. If it's, there'd be no reason for us to hire a consultant if you're going to revise the application sufficiently, and again, you'd have to maybe renegotiate this with the owner, but if you're going to go, say, expand this, as Ms. Axelson suggested, further north, reduce this and get rid of this, if you can get rid of all the incursion into, incursion into the wetlands and the stream corridor, then maybe we don't need to hire one, but I personally recommend doing this. And again, this would give us guidance as to further solar array applications that might be going into environmentally constrained lands, but that's something for the board to consider as we go forward. That noted. Ms. Weiser, I'll start with you on the comments on this one.
So, yes, I agree with you that I would be in favor of hiring a consultant if it's the case that don't make some changes, but other than that, no, I have nothing else to add.
Thank you. Mr. Pickett?
I think hiring, if, if you agree and don't want to change or mitigate the plans enough, we would go after a consultant. My question here was, is there consideration for, you know, there's a stream corridor, there's a pretty good berm that comes off during the hike?
There's not. It's measured, it's measured from the high watermark.
Of the actual, right.
Right, but I mean, you're off to the south of the west side where we walked it and the stream is down there waist.
So, I mean- So, I mean, that, that might be something that the zoning board would consider.
Right.
When deciding whether or not to grant a variance.
For us, it's not.
So that might be something for them, but.
Is it in the consideration?
For the planning board, you're bound.
Or do we have recommendations for that?
You're bound.
We, I was going to say.
You're hiking within 20, 30 feet of it, and you could go.
We, because it's in the actual stream definition for the corridor, there's not, it's not a, it's not anything that we can relax, it's not, it's not a zoning standard that we can relax. It can only be varied by the ZBA because it's a definition, because it's included in the definition.
Okay.
Because I think what you're saying is, sometimes you might be able to see where this is an important corridor, other times it's bermed up, people have been walking up and down, it doesn't seem worth protecting, but it's because it's defined.
Overall, it's on the hillside going up, so the incursion of that stream into where you wanted to put your panels, you know, wouldn't happen, but you say that's a ZBA decision.
Well, if that's what they choose to seek, it's got to the ZBA.
Okay.
Yeah, let's look at that.
So, questions ahead?
Ms. Wasser?
I agree with my colleague's previous comments.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver?
I would actually like to hire a wetlands consultant regardless, just because the Crum Elbow Creek is a pretty unique creek. And there's really, like, very few spots where there's a defined stream bed.
That's true.
And, you know, I think it would be really helpful to see it on this application.
Thank you. Ms. Napoli?
I concur.
Well, I think you've heard it's unanimous, if you want to proceed with the application as drawn, that we're going to require escrow to hire a consultant. In our agenda meeting, we put forth some names for you guys to consider, and I'm going to wait to make, to have a vote to authorize us to hire anyone until you get back to me after you think about what you've heard. But we had Norbert Quinzer, we've worked with before, Eric Kiviat, as well as Bruce Barber. Mr. Barber was recommended by Ms. Axelson, and we've already had an e-introduction as a consequence. Mr. Kiviat is really more of an endangered, threatened and rare species specialist rather than wetlands or ecologist, but he's certainly capable, he's affiliated with Bard. Mr. Quinzer's an environmental consultant as well, I think it's called Bagden Environmental, if I recall correctly.
He's, he has his own firm now, he's my fellow colleague.
Ah!
Because Bagden was, yeah.
That's right, you were with Bagden before. Right, so at any rate, those are just the names to toss out. They're all, I'm sure, very qualified. I got to work with Norbert, he's a nice guy and very solid, so.
Yes.
At any rate, you'll need to label and show the tributary on the plans. I'd like to know what percentage of A1.1 is in the floodway. It looked like there's a big portion running through here.
Actually, it's on the other side.
So a large portion of, no, just that small portion of it. Okay.
Wait, the purple line is the stream corridor?
No, that's with the floodway.
Oh, the floodway.
So does it, is, does it not raise any concerns for solar arrays to be in a flood area, floodway? I don't know, I mean, that's why I'm asking. This is still relatively new to the board.
I mean, they're, they're raised up out of the ground, so I mean.
Yes, but floods, waters can rise pretty substantially.
These, I think these are three foot, as a minimum high.
Yeah.
So I don't, I can't see the risk of them touching the area.
I'm just thinking about storm surges is really more it, when you have a large volume of water, not that it would go and stay for, this isn't going to be Noah's Ark requirement, that we're going to be flooded for 40 days and nights, because if you have a storm surge, you can have a powerful amount of water. And as Chris noted correctly, the Crum Elbow Creek, really, it's, it's.
Yeah, it just kind of goes where it wants.
Well, there's established, I mean, there's already, there's already established water elevations based upon, you know, the flood studies that have been done, so we have the, we have the elevations, you know, to go, go with, we just need to make sure that, make sure the survey that they have is obviously in the same datum, you know, as that, but Tad and I will have to go work on that, but, so.
Just something else for the board to consider is that under your own solar law, there's a standard that says solar energy equipment shall not be sited within any required buffer areas.
I know.
That's what I was saying, as drawn right now, it's going to, you're going to have to have variances for all three sites, I believe, because they all extend into buffer areas, it appears. Well, with the exception of the A1.3, I apologize. Well, that extends, I'm sorry, that's in the buffer areas for the stream corridor, so you would need to apply to the ZBA as soon as you could. I mean, we, they don't take action until we conclude SECA. And by the way, for the young people back there from Reinbeck in high school, SHIPO is the State Estuero Preservation Officer, if you're wondering about all these acronyms. SECA and SECA is State Environmental Quality Review and Quality Review Act that enables it. I try not to use acronyms as much as possible since we have young people back there tonight, but at any rate, and the DEC is the Department of Environmental Conservation, they regulate a lot of the natural environment and how to protect it. So if you have any questions afterwards, you're welcome to ask any of us. So do you guys have any other questions of us on this application?
No, well, I said, we will review the design if.
Okay. It's a, it's a tuffey. It's a tuffey, yes, there you go, so.
And, and really, you know, as we kind of go back through, what can you get a permit for, what can you get a variance for, et cetera, et cetera, I know the original, you know, recommendation was, get these things away from all this important environmental stuff. So I think it's worth really rethinking that. It might uncomplicate things and it may just be a matter of the property owner, we.
So we'll wait to circulate type and set a public hearing pending further information from the applicants. The next application is Cream Street Solar Farm. Same applicants again, different location. Also, back to an easier site.
Yeah.
By far. Before you start, a number of us had an opportunity to walk the site. I want to thank the owner of the site, who's back in the back, I believe, for accompanying us and proving to be a great tour guide. This isn't, this is a particularly interesting site because you travel really high up a hill to get up there, and while I think you may need more screening or landscaping to screen, it's, unless you are driving by and just stare at a certain angle, I don't think anybody's going to really notice it with the screen that you proposed thus far. We'll see, once we set a public hearing, whether the neighbors have any objections, but it seems like a great use up there. It's already all pretty cleared and it's pretty relatively flat up at the top, so, Ms. Napoli, I'm going to turn it over to you.
I don't think I have too much to say about this site, as Mr. Dupre indicated, it's less complicated. We did add additional vegetative screening, as requested at the, at the last session, firmed up the road, access road a little bit. It is an existing farm road, pretty much all the way up the hill. But we indicated it more clearly in the drawing than it, than what you saw last time, so.
Except for that, you're on.
I don't think I have anything else.
Thank you.
Sorry?
Ms. Axelson, comments?
This application also is in pretty good shape, a lot of the comments will be technical. On the buffering, I know that when a few board members and I discussed this, we had originally asked for some buffering along the south of A2, and it looks like the southwest corner of A2 has some buffering, but doesn't really continue. So it suggested that there be some more buffering along the southern, the rest of the southern line of Array A.2. There is an area where you have existing trees and wooded area to be retained, but it's not clearly marked between the driveway and the west side of Array A2. And I also think along the western side of Array A2, more buffering is needed.
You're referring to this area and through here, I believe?
Yes, the southern line. There, there's kind of about two-thirds of the southern line that could use a little more buffering.
Yes, okay.
And then along the western line, just south of where the driveway goes into the Array.
This corner area.
To kind of fill that in.
Yeah.
Yeah. There weren't any issues with setbacks. We were going to make the same comment on the Blandings Turtle notation to add the notes about the restrictive fence, and I think on, sorry to keep going back, but on Cream Street and Athanas East, we're also going to ask you to produce the pamphlet that's going to be available on-site for Blandings Turtle encounter. Again, kind of a technicality. With all of these, we were able to look at what was provided in terms of trying to show impervious coverage, and we think we have a handle on it, but there were some aspects of it that were a little, were in need of clarification, so.
Okay.
And our comments will, you know, make, make our comments and then request offline consultation to get a better handle on, you know, what's an array, what's in a table, what's a, whatever. I think those are the major issues on this, and I'm just, those are, those are the major points. Most of the other stuff is technical.
Thank you, Ms. Axelson. Mrs. Taro?
No, not yet.
No comments?
No, not yet.
Ms. Pollard?
So, similar comments to Athanas East on the resolution, we have to change the applicant to be NY Solar 1000.
Who has this file?
It's a Type 1 action because it's in an ag district.
Correct.
More than 200 acres of disturbance, and it needs to go to county planning.
And we're prepared to type the action, refer this one, just like we, oh, Mr. Athanas, you weren't here. We start at 6:00 now, sorry. The east side is pretty clean, and we're typing the action, we set a public hearing for May the 1st, I believe, and we refer it to county, we refer it to all the agencies, so the process is started now. The other side, the side that you live on, we discovered that there's arrays, there are arrays proposed in a stream, in the middle of a stream, as well as the wetlands, so we've talked to the applicants about, talking to you about maybe changing the leased areas, or they'll need some variances from the zoning board of appeals because of it being in the stream, at the center of the stream itself. That's a quick summary of a three-minute conversation, sorry.
If, if variances are about.
If, right.
I saw the seven, and the engineers are supposed to hear about this timeframe.
We changed about a year ago to starting at 6:00 PM.
Well, the literature I got said so.
No, the literature would say 6:00 PM.
The agenda's at 6:00.
Okay, this it does, but what, the engineers?
Our consultants are the ones who actually asked us to start an hour earlier than we used to, and we're delighted because we can get out in time for dinner.
Sometimes.
Having, yes, sometimes, as opposed to midnight meals. So getting back to Cream Street. That's okay, I'm sorry, I just noticed you walked in.
Do you need a copy of this?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
How many copies?
Just one.
Just one.
We'll copy it. This is to authorize New York Solar 1000.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't push that.
Oh, I was just, this is, yes, thank you, I'll, I'll review it.
Thank you. Okay, back to Cream Street. I interrupted myself there. Victoria, we were talking about just being prepared to circulate.
We were saying we're prepared to circulate this project.
Instead of public hearing, right. Anything else from you? As regards this application?
Not at this point.
Okay.
It's still Type 1 action?
It's still Type 1.
It's still Type 1.
Because it's an ag district, right.
Because it's in an ag district. I mean, we're sending it out to several agencies, so you might want to consider setting it for the second meeting in May, just so we get responses back.
The 15th.
We do need the decommissioning plan and all the other things that Liz already went over.
Correct. So, well, we still haven't had comments from the board yet. Ms. Napoli, comments on Cream Street Solar?
I would just echo what I said earlier, that appreciate the changes you made, particularly for the landscaping. Can I ask a quick question with regards to what is the type of buffering that you are putting in briefly?
It's, it's a mix of two species of trees, eastern pine and Norway spruce, I believe, are the two.
Thank you.
Mr. Oliver?
I appreciate the changes you made, and, you know, I think this one's a lot easier than the other. And being up on the top of the hill, I think it's going to be a nice sight for it. Thank you.
Ms. Wasser?
I concur with my colleague's comments.
Thank you. Mr. Pickett?
Glad to see you moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Weiser?
I have nothing to add.
Okay.
Okay.
Again, something that I alluded to earlier, we'll need the decommissioning plan, we need a sort of narrative in through there. You know that we'll likely be recommending that you enter into the three-way agreement with the town and the site owner in order, for the decommissioning if it never happens. I had that more landscaping and screening should be shown in this area as well with Liz. I know that right now, when I was up there, there's nothing over here, it's just woods, but if they ever subdivide, we're required to provide screening on the, the non-residential side portion, so that residences, if they ever subdivide, would not have to look at this without screening. That noted, you have eastern pine, and I'm just wanting to make sure that eastern pine grows very quickly and loses its lower limbs. The Norway spruce will provide lower limbs so that you, it will be screened, but I want to make sure the eastern pine doesn't somehow throw off too much shadows over there, because it's a quick grower, and it gets to a height of about 40 feet, so as I understand it, you need to have this placed pretty far away from the edge of the solar arrays. And it appears to me right now that the landscaping is shown where it begins to get flat, you might want to move that, the eastern pines down some. Reason why I say that is you don't want them to get so tall that they have to be removed because they're shedding your rays. Otherwise, I didn't have any comments either, and I'm happy to see this is also ready to move forward. So, Chris, you believe you have this file?
I do. Resolution classifying the action, declaring intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinator review, and referring the action to the Dutch County Department of Planning and Development, Resolution 2018-28, whereas, 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 now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby, one, classifies the project as a Type 1 action under SECA, two, declares its intent to serve as lead agency in a coordinator review of the project and directs its secretary to circulate notice of intent to all other involved and interested agencies. Three, directs its secretary to refer the application to Dutch County Department of Planning and Development pursuant to Section 239M of the General Municipal Law.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. For the record, the interested and involved agencies are New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority, IE NYSERTA, New York State Estuero Preservation Office, Dutch County Department of Public Works, because it's on a county road, Residelt Fire District, Hyde Park Town Board, Hyde Park Fire Inspector, Hyde Park Conservation Advisory Council, Central Hudson and Hyde Park Central School District. The, the agencies, town board and school district are involved because you've got to work out your pilot agreement, as well as the decommissioning plan. And would you like for us, Victoria recommended that we set the public hearing for the second meeting in May, because this goes to a lot of agencies, and this won't be circulated until we receive the additional numbers of packets, which means that to give them their full 30 days, go ahead and wait until May 15th, I believe?
Right, I mean, you may want to reconsider Athanas East, so they're on the same night, or, or schedule them both early so you can start getting comment, so.
I was going to say, why don't we just schedule this early to see if we get public comment? Does it, does it, you don't mind coming back on May? No, you don't, of course, why? You'll want to come back as soon as you can. Make it a motion to set the public hearing for May 1st.
To move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries. And it's like we'll see you in a month, and if you want, if you'd like to contact the board for an offline meeting, as we call them, an informal meeting, to discuss Athanas West, just let me know.
Yep.
Okay?
Thank you.
By the way, I forgot to ask your name, you're the new Liam, I believe.
Yeah, I am, yeah.
Did you state your name for the record?
It's Adam, Adam Webb.
Adam Webb? Oh, right, of course, I've seen this, sorry.
Adam, you're going to have Chris sign?
Yes.
Ms. Dana, thanks again. The next item on the agenda is Taconic Realty Violet Avenue. This is a hybrid application. By the way, Mr. Oliver is recused, and board alternate, Rob Waters, is appointed officially here with throughout the duration of this application. Mr. Waters, thanks for coming in, and welcome, good to have you back.
That's interesting, I've seen this.
No, for Ms. Wasser, our newest member.
That's very exciting.
We, I actually asked the board, the town board, to pass a law so that we could have alternates when people are recused. Not for absences, I've seen the towns, when there's absences and you have 20 different people at different times saying, I want this and this, and, but for recusals, does that last throughout the life of the, of the project? We have different, we have two alternates, and we try to trade them off one another. So, this is a hybrid application. It's an existing site. It's an existing site. It's been a plaza for many, many years, perhaps a former shopping plaza, but now it's actually kind of a healthcare plaza, if that makes any sense. The applicant's proposing to subdivide the site into four distinct lots, each would then require its own site plan. One of them, I believe, would be sold off to Hospice, which perhaps is driving this. Welcome back, Mr. Kaminsky, Mr. Berger. And welcome back, Ms. Leibert. Let me turn it over to you.
Thank you. Ms. Sossen? Yeah. Kelly Leibert with Page Park Associates. As everyone recall, this is a application before you for an existing facility. So, as Mr. Chairman had indicated, this parcel is 9.8 acres on 9G. I think everyone knows where it is. There's four existing buildings there. We were previously before you seeking to subdivide those four buildings into four separate lots. And, a little bit confusing, but at the same time, we're also seeking site plan approval for each of those lots. And the reason for that is because we're creating these new lots, we need to have a basis of the site plan approval. Our original application before you, some time ago, included the site plan approval application for the four new lots, which we're creating. Subsequent to that, we've had meetings with the town, and Hospice is a separate application now. They're going to seek site plan approval for their own lot, so they'll be right after us as a separate application.
Correct.
So, the application in front of you is for subdivision of the individual parcel into four separate lots, and then site plan approval for three of the four lots. So, hopefully, that's not too confusing.
That was, that was stated very well.
Thank you.
Yes.
For most of you who know that facility, the four businesses that are up there now is State Farm Insurance is right next to the road. There's Liberty Dialysis, which is on the north side of the site. In the back, the big building, is Anderson School, and they have an office and a day hab there. The south side of that building was formerly St. Francis Hospital, and they used it as a warehouse and an office space. And then to the south is the last building, which is Hospice. The site has existing water and sewer. And we did have a discussion with this board, and we did provide a response to the comments. There were a lot of different comments, but I think collectively, the four kind of big clusters of comments had to do with utilities, and primarily the creation of reciprocal easements for a number of different things. Landscaping, sidewalks and parking, and then the photos of the existing buildings, so you could understand what they look like. So, I'll take each one of those individually. I'll start with the photos of each building, because that's the easiest one. So, we did provide.
Can I ask you to speak a little bit?
Yeah, it doesn't feel like this is on. Is this on?
That's better.
Maybe that's better? This one doesn't feel like it's on tonight. Maybe it is. So, the photos of the existing building, we provided in the packet, so you do have those. But I did also provide those on the board. I can go through them each individually.
No, 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 this is, this is to fulfill the requirement that elevations are shown. Because they're not proposing anything different to the buildings, we've, and this has happened before to the projects, we're allowing this to be, take the place of an elevation.
Yes, yes. So, with respect to the sidewalks, I think the big discussion had to do with the creation of sidewalks along 9G, which we had to, you know, one of the comments that your planner had had and the board had was the extension of sidewalks all the way down the front. And there is parking right in front of State Farm there. If you recall, I was a little reluctant, I know everyone remembers that, of shifting those parking spaces. And so, I did discuss it with Jason Page, who's just a fantastic boss. Oh, he's here.
Not that he's here.
Sorry, not that he's here. So, we did agree to do that, and so we have shifted that, so we do have that parking that comes all the way down. Also, a lot of just cross pedestrian crossings through the lot, so we did provide those on the plan, and I can go through those at greater length if you want me to. Landscaping, so there were a number of comments that the board had and that Liz had had. I have to say, again, because Jason's here, but he is really good at landscaping, not as good as you, but he is really good. And he does take a lot of pride in our site. So, if you drive around and you look at our facilities, we have our own gardener, and we do really take a lot of pride in that. So, what we did was try to supplement some of the landscaping that's there, and add some existing green area. I'd be happy to sit down with Liz or with you, Mr. Chairman, if you want to go up to the site, and we can walk through, because it is existing. So, it's a little bit easier to do a field trip in a, in a situation like this.
And you added greens, you added plantings along here. There's various areas where you've added more plantings.
There are, yeah. So, I'm happy to do that, if that helps, because it's already there, and we can actually look at it. So, that leaves the last thing, which is the utilities. And as Victoria had said at the first meeting, this is a relatively easy application, except for the utilities, and the tail sort of wags the dog. The site has existing water and sewer, so the water service, again, just to kind of, maybe this is boring, but the water service was put in years ago by Hyde Park Water. It was recently taken over by Dutchess County Water and Waste Water. It's a little bit unique, because oftentimes Dutchess County Water and Waste Water, they end their ownership at the road. And in this particular situation, Hyde Park Water extended their ownership into each of the buildings. So, we have been working very diligently with Dutchess County Water and Waste Water to kind of unravel that. It's a unique situation, so it is taking a little bit longer than I think we would like it to take, but it is a unique situation, so we've been working with them. We did hire a attorney, Al Natoli, who is very well-known on dealing with utility situations like this, and he's helping us navigate that. So, I don't have an answer for you tonight on water. I can just tell you that Dutchess County Water has been very good in working with us. We've had several meetings. Some of your staff had been at the office when we were meeting with them.
The last communication we had from Ms. Clark from DCWA indicated that a new water line would be required for each building?
Yeah, and I think that's changed. So, yeah, I think that has. We were asked with marking out, because a lot of the records aren't available, so we went ahead and marked out where the location of the water lines are, gave those to our surveyor. He's in the process of putting those on a new plan, so we can send those up to Dutchess County Water and Waste Water. I, I will tell you that I think that this project will move faster than that, and we may get into a situation where it's, you know, conditional approval. But everyone is working together. So, we have, you know, the Commissioner of Water and Waste Water and Tanya, that's working right with us.
Sure, so, you're saying that in this instance, DCWA actually owns the water lines that go into the building, up to the point of the building?
Well, yeah. Historically, the municipalities owned the water line to the, the meter. And so, now, as you know, Dutchess County Water and Waste Water generally requires a master meter pit. So, that's not, obviously, in this situation, we don't have that. And the, their lines actually extend back to the meters that are in the building.
Maybe that makes it easier.
It does and it doesn't. We've gone back and forth with them. The regulations, there's regulations and there's guidelines, as Pete knows, I don't need to bore him with this, but there's regulations and there's guidelines, so we're trying to figure out how best to work around those. I don't have all the answers tonight, which I would love to have.
No, because, I didn't even know that they owned the lines through the, I just assumed that this was done, like, most of them are.
Yes.
So, it's not, so, okay. That is, that is a nut for you guys to solve, as you keep working it through.
Correct. Yep, we're nipping through that. Now, with respect to sewer, this is, as everyone remembers, one of the very few properties in the town that actually has municipal sewer, and it discharges south of the site. We're also working with Al Natoli and Dutchess County Water and Waste Water on whether or not they're interested in acquiring that and bringing that onboard with Dutchess County Water and Waste Water. And I know Victoria has been involved in a lot of the discussions. I'm certain that Al, he was retained, I think, like a month ago. We're trying to get him up to speed, so I'm sure he'll be communicating with you on both of those. But there's, you know, sort of full accountability. Every time we have a meeting, we try to bring everyone in the room, just because it's the best way to move it along.
I've been in the meetings, I've been in the meetings, so.
Yep. So, with respect to the utilities, again, I, I think that we're probably going to move faster than you have an answer for those, but they are being reviewed by your staff. I know our attorney, Jerry Kamados, has prepared the reciprocal cross easements for everything on the site that will be going, obviously, to Hospice's attorney and to Victoria to review as a draft, as we proceed with some of the other site plan items that you have questions about.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you, and thank you for, for providing other responses to all the comments. Ms. Axelsson, I'm going to start with you.
So, yeah, we did have a lot of comments last time about landscaping and pedestrian. A number of the landscaping comments were addressed. Obviously, we'd love to have a little bit more, but we see that some buffer plantings were added. I had to kind of skip back and forth between this and Hospice, because some of the comments previously were directed at Hospice. Some of the remaining stuff, again, this is right out of the code, these are code standards, reducing parking areas, and the reason that we had requested that originally, understanding these are existing parking areas, is that I don't think they get a high rate of utilization. And again, that's a code standard. We appreciate all the pedestrian changes that were made. There are, again, a couple little places where we either could use... Am I being too loud? Is it this?
Uh, yes.
Snap that off.
I'm so electric. It's you. Anyway, so reductions in parking, we're, we're going to repeat that. I think the idea here is that if there's going to be relaxation of that standard, there has to be some kind of reasoning presented to the board, so that they can consider that.
I don't believe that the parking wasn't calculated based on current uses in the...
It wasn't, that was one of the issues. It, it was based on just a flat across-the-board standard of one space per 200 square feet. And one of the things I'd asked for in the last review was, tell us what each of these uses are, and here's the use, I think it is, and then show us the parking calculations based on those uses. For example, the medical uses. Medical clinic and business or professional office were the ones.
We'll go ahead, yeah, we'll do that. We will ask for a relief in that request. One of the reasons is that, as you'll hear soon, is that the adjoining, the next applicant, I believe, is proposing an expansion. And so, we do actually, we've been driving up there, and I'm sure that they can speak to that as well, because they're there every day. But the parking lot has, has filled up, which is a good thing, it's a great thing. But we also have a building that has, is partially vacant, and so what you're seeing is not full capacity. So, I think, as you suggested, probably the best thing is to give you a table.
Yes.
Showing you those uses.
Yeah.
And that will help you.
Yeah, filling in those blanks will help us see, you know, how this is all done. Let's see. On the pedestrian circulation, again, a lot was done. I'll deal with the Hospice issues separately. We'd wanted the, the sidewalks connected along the front of Dialysis, just because, you know, there's a couple places where people come out from the building, and then they just walk into the parking lot. So, we thought, why not just make a sidewalk across there?
Can you, can you tell us what you're referring to there?
I'm pointing to the southern side of the Dialysis building. There are three sidewalks that sort of head south, right out of the building entrances and go south, but there's no sidewalk that runs in front of the building.
Oh, sorry.
So, they just, they come out and go to the curb, but they don't connect. So, we'd asked for that to be connected.
That makes sense.
I'm just thinking of people, you know, getting out of their cars.
Oh, you can turn it back on.
I think that one works, too, so they bring it close. Is that better?
Yes, there.
The entrance to Liberty Dialysis is actually on the west side.
Right.
So, what we'll do is look at a connection there. The doors that you were referencing, it's hard when you see them on plan view, because you don't know what their functionality is, but it's a side door that rarely people use. The staff come in the, the back door, which is the east door. I think that was like a holdover from a prior use. So, we'll show a crosswalk for the front door.
Thank you.
Okay. And, let's see. Then in terms of landscaping, there are a couple places to clear up, to just say, show a continued wooded area line, so we know that that, that's there.
Wait, I'm sorry, what did you say? Out of what?
Because you're showing landscaping in certain places, but I'm pretty sure there's wooded area to remain out back.
Oh, yes.
But the line just kind of stops.
Okay.
I think there's no more wooded area. Very good, yep. I know that Tad raised the issue about, that there's not supposed to be more than 350 square feet per parking space, so we'll have to deal with that standard. In other words, between access and the actual parking space.
Oh, correct.
So, we'll have to deal with that somehow, in notation or relaxation of a standard. And I'm going to need some more clarification to be able to verify the scale calculations. There were some.
Yeah.
Issues there, so.
I think if we can do that offline together with Tad.
Yeah, when we issue our comments, maybe that's what we'll do.
Okay.
If the board's okay with that, to have offline consultation about the scale calculations, get those straightened out.
Let me leap in here real quickly. When we did the, the conversion of the existing facility for Kitty Dialysis, I believe we gave you an increase.
Okay.
We need to know what that initial increase was back in that plan. I mean, I can hire, I can have Liz look at it, it's probably less expensive for you to find it, but I know we gave a percentage increase, because you're already above that scale.
Okay.
So, we had to have done something under a special use permit, because that will then allow us to know how much Hospice you, what we discussed in our agenda meeting, and this is for the board to consider, under the special use permit, you're allowed to expand a non-conforming structure or scale up to 50%. So, we had you establish the baseline, and then let's just, to throw it out there, let's say that the Dialysis Center, because you added, I think, a portico and some turnaround, let's say it added 4%. That means that you have 46% left expansion. And so, what we're going to do, we thought first, was just divide up the 46%, divide it by four, and each site, new site plan or new site, would then be able to allow to expand it to that amount. But as I thought about it, not all the lots are equally sized.
No, they're not.
So, for, I know, so for the board, I just, just throwing it out here.
Yeah.
It's just numbers.
I know, I'm doing this, but we've, we've been talking about this. So, you need the baseline where you're at, including what you've already been granted for existing projects, and then some kind of allocation.
For the new.
For the future, how much each lot can expand, based on that.
Right. If you propose that to us, then we can.
Okay.
Lock that in.
Then I'll do it.
And also, just to remind you, Kelly, and the site owners, if you ever did want to put, like, townhouses or something in the rear, residential does not count towards scale.
Okay.
So, you don't have to worry about that. That's still easy back there.
Off to the side.
Yeah, that's still to the side. So, that'll just help us try to figure out what the best way to allocate this is.
Okay.
Because one of the lots, it looks like it's not going to be able to expand much at all, except maybe vertically, that's the, the one that has the insurance on it. There's no real room there to expand.
Yeah, right.
So, why give it a lot there if you could?
Correct.
Again, this is just for you guys to think about.
How do you want to allocate it? Okay. And then whatever that allocation is, is going to carry over to Hospice, because they are only going to be able to expand by that amount.
And Hospice, Hospice will want to expand, I believe.
They've already exceeded.
Ms. Moss believes they already exceed it. Ms. Moss believes they already exceed it.
So, they need a variance.
What they're allowed, so they needed variance. That's in her letter. Anyway, I interrupted you, I apologize. Please continue.
It's fine, we do this, it's cool.
Yeah, please continue.
So, I did notice that, and I don't, I wish I could be more specific, but there are a couple of places where proposed landscaping sort of corresponds with the snow storage area. So, we're going to want to revisit that, because we don't want to have it be a situation where you put in some new landscaping, and then it's snow storage.
Well, it's actually nice, it's an existing site, so we can probably relocate where the storm storage is, based on what we actually do.
Right.
Okay.
You've got some room.
Anything else? Ms. Sotero, any comments?
Not many, there's not too much here for engineering. But Kelly, one thing I was curious, you mentioned about the water authority and the sewer. Why would they have an interest in the sewer? Because that goes to the Kipsey.
Oh, did I miss represent? I thought you said we had to do it. No? Okay, and I was wrong. Good catch. You're on it tonight.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right. And, you know, you're working with them on, you know, the water and stuff, as you had said, so.
Yes, yep.
That's all I have, not much for me on this one.
Ms. Paul Dore, any comments?
So, the scale is an issue that we need to resolve for both of them. Same, the same way you allocated the density, we'd want you to allocate the remaining scale. One of the things for the board to consider is reviewing, doing the seeker review on this project and hospice together, because it's one subdivision with four site plans. And so, we may be able to just do it all together.
I believe we can. I just want to point out that no one's, the only proposal that increases the intensity of the use really is hospice. And that's just an expansion for employees. We'll hear more from Mr. Kaminsky, Mr. Berger, but as I understand it, employees come in for meetings and they fan out. They come in, they fan out to go back to patients, et cetera.
Yeah. Can you explain that?
On its own, I think that expansion would have just been a type two action.
That's what I think.
So.
The only concern that I have, and we can talk about this back and forth, is if, for whatever reason, their seeker review, just because of the expansion that's before you, takes longer than ours, and I don't know if we need seeker to form the transportation corporation, and I don't want to hold that up.
You will.
I mean, as, I mean, as proposed, you need the subdivision in order to grant them site plan approval. So, they're connected.
Correct, but we need, you could take action on our seeker separately, because then that would allow us to move forward with whatever we need to do with the state, with that transportation corporation. I mean, if they look like they're hand in hand, I don't think it's an issue. I don't think they're going to.
I'm not sure it's going to make that much of a difference, because, like I said, on its own, that expansion would just be a type two action anyways.
Well, I just want to go back, what seeker impacts, potential seeker impacts are we looking at, other than potential increase in traffic? And this is not enough traffic to trigger-
I know, it's an existing developed site, so.
It's fully developed.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
If you said, I'm going to put in 100 townhomes in the back, well, in this expansion, this is a little bit of a different story. But right now, this is a state highway that, I mean, I suppose DOT says they want a traffic impact study, but I cannot imagine that, even with the vagaries of DOT lately, so.
Okay, well, as we move forward, we can-
Yeah, I'm just, I'm thinking that seeker doesn't look like an issue here to me.
Good.
I don't know if the rest of the board can weigh in, obviously.
Okay.
Right. So, then, I know that you're still working out the easements, but at some point, we do need an easement plan, which is going to show all the easements. It can be broad with crosshatching or something, just so we have some sheet that shows the easements.
Other, just on that, no, other than the utilities, which would have a specific, or potentially have a specific description, they may just be reciprocal easements for everything. Yeah, I don't know if I'm going to actually have a meets and bounds description for every water line and every sewer line.
Wouldn't it be easier to do a blanket?
Yeah, that's what I think Jerry Komodis is putting together.
So, I mean, if that's the case, maybe you show us the plan with everything crosshatching, and you just list-
Highlight, yeah.
All the different things, because it's got to cover electricity, access, the light pole. I mean, there's a few things that go in there.
I did it for the NNN project, remember? We had to do those reciprocal crosshatches.
Yes.
I don't know if you remember that.
Yes.
And that was the basis, I actually gave that to Jerry. So, that was the basis of the easement agreement. So, that's what we were using, is that particular one.
Right, that one, I think, was actually less, it was only for the access.
Yes.
So, it was a little less complicated.
Correct.
And isn't there an issue with stormwater? Because the stormwater detention pond is actually-
So, right, we want to show the pond, I don't know.
And the maintenance agreement, yeah.
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 So, that has to be separately shown.
Yeah, that, it can still be a generic across the, all of the easements, but the pond would have to be identified.
So, I leave it, I leave it to you how to propose it.
Okay.
But right now, we need something for the subdivision, showing the easements or identifying the easements.
Okay.
Anything else?
I think that's it for now.
Ms. Weiser, comments?
My main concern is to reduce parking and add more trees. That's it.
Mr. Pickett?
No comment.
Ms. Wasser?
No comment.
Oh, Mr. Oliver?
Water.
I mean, waters, I'm sorry, I'm so used to having Mr. Oliver there.
Sorry, my apologies. Oliver and waters don't matter.
No. That's a good one, though.
Yeah, no, no comment at this time.
And Ms. Napoli?
You know, I have to say something.
I know, I know, I know.
I agree with Ms. Weiser, decrease parking where feasible would be a great opportunity as you upgrade this area right now. And that can allow for maybe smaller clusters of parking that will encourage more landscaping around.
The problem, and I will look at it, and I'm going to provide you with the table, and I think maybe I'll go up and do some actual counts, but we really, and I think that hospice can probably attest to that, we really do have excessive parking there now. And we still don't have the second half of that building leased. So, I want to be cognizant of the fact that I don't know what that use is going to be. And if I take away that parking now, it's going to be really difficult to bring that back. So, let me look at it and provide you with the table for you to look at.
And I can appreciate that, but then the other half would be, how can increase landscaping?
Sure, sure.
Or modernizing it?
Yes.
Partly in front of the insurance building, maybe?
Sure, okay.
Just, it would just freshen everything up.
Sure, and we can do a field visit up there, too, if anyone wants to go up there.
I think a field visit is very warranted, with as many members of the board as we can get.
Yep, yep.
Because this is a kind of unique situation, where it's already built, and we can walk, can see everything.
And I think that Jason would just love that idea. Yeah.
You are.
Yeah.
So, my comments mostly were covered, as it turns out. And I only had five, which is, I know, unusual. But the one comment I wanted to make was, so I can see it, you pulled back the parking here to extend the sidewalk south of the insurance building? Can you pull it back a little bit more to give us? You're right now, people are going to park and maybe hit pedestrians.
Sure, I'll look at that.
Like another foot or two to put green space or something? I think that would soften it, but more importantly, it would make me feel more protected as a pedestrian, because we know, we who live here and drive around, I see these residents of the Hyde Park Assisted Living Facility, walking up and down on the sidewalk that's there now on their, it's sad, they just walk up and down for exercise. And I see them also walking across the street to go to the bodega, which seems very dangerous to me, because there's no crosswalk there. But I'm assuming that now they may walk up and down through here, and since they tend to be more infirm, I'd want to make sure that we, just make sure that they're protected as much as possible.
And if, Michael, if I can sort of-
Yes, please do.
That was one of the comments I was going to repeat, because one of the original comments was, hey, you have 48 feet here between the back line of the parking and the rest of the pavement. I know that the drive-through is something to be retained. And so, we felt like you would still end up with your 26-foot wide drive aisle if you added a little strip of landscaping. So, I was kind of disappointed not to see a strip of landscaping there, so that's-
What?
We'll make you happy.
We appreciate the site owner, who does happen to be here, at least one half of the site ownership, making the, agreeing to provide the sidewalk and move the parking back. One of the things I want to emphasize is, this is an opportunity to take an existing site and make a little bit, you know, do some improvements, consistent with the improvements that we're seeing around the rest of Hyde Park, thank heavens. That's my only comment, believe it or not.
I have one more thing I just want to bring up. You were saying that the subdivision approval might have to proceed without the utilities, but, I mean, I don't see how the chair could sign the final plat without having the final locations of the waterline easements on the plat, and also knowing whether or not we needed the T-corp for the sewer. So, I mean, we can start going through the process, but I just don't see how it can be resolved without.
Understood.
Signing the subdivision plat, which must be signed before the site plan sets.
Yes, yeah.
The knee bones connected to the, whatever, whatever, whatever.
Yes.
So, we'll give you a chance, so Liz, you're going to issue a comment letter? And then, and this is, again, just on the three site plans, as Ms. Label correctly stated. We'll be discussing the fourth site plan next. And then, what are we looking at for circulation? Based on your comments, or maybe revised plan set?
I, my understanding was that we weren't ready for circulation.
No, but I mean, I'm wanting to get, I'm wanting us to get there.
Yeah. Well, I didn't have any EAF comments, we're not looking at any reports. And so, I think what I'd like to do is reissue the comments, deal with some of the zoning and green space type stuff.
Yeah, we need the parking calculations, et cetera.
Parking calculations, scale calculations.
I feel like I'm wanting us to get to where, after the next submission, that we're ready to go for seeker, circulation, get everything started. Right now, we've been talking, we met last in October, then we had the long offline meeting, where every, what were there, 20 people there, 19 people there? Which was very helpful, because that's what then produced this.
Yes.
And then, that is comments, that's what produced the changes. So, we just need to, I want us to get moving, you know me.
And you know what else? We know that when we send to the county, they're going to comment on lighting. And I know what the response was. These are all existing. We need to know what's there and how tall it is. I know what the concern is that-
Let me just, let me just-
Let's talk about that briefly, because-
Just give us the pole heights.
Yeah, I did provide a picture, I'll get the height.
Just get the height. I mean, again, just for the young people in the back and for the board, there needs to be some sort of nexus between what they're proposing and what our code says. If they're not proposing a wholesale change to the site, I don't believe that we should be saying, oh, well, now you've got to meet the latest lighting standards. Also, we're all aware, who've been up here, that the lower the light, the more lights you need. This would cause serious disruption to an existing site that has commercial uses and people coming in every day. So, at least for me, because I can't tell you how the board would be, but I just want the pole heights sort of labeled, and we have them. I'm not going to personally say that you need to have new lighting, because that's beyond the nexus, the interchange of what you're proposing, what our code requires. But I do think, like everyone else has said, in that you've gotten a lot of the way there, that there's ways to improve pedestrian connections, which you've done, and to soften up the site. I myself, I should have added, a lot of where you proposed landscaping, they're not trees. I'd love to see some small trees or fruiting tree. I'm from the south, I like shade to park under when it's hot in August in the summer, that's all. So, I'm always trying to think about others who might feel like me. But I think overall, you've gone a lot of the way there, what we were asked to. So, thank you.
Also, the new EAF in the next submission, the updated one. It was slightly amended the form in January.
Oh, that's right.
They didn't have any EAF comments, so it's going to be the same, right?
I just need one, probably.
The new form.
Just one, I mean, just the copies for circulation should be the new form.
You know what we're talking about, they changed the form.
I do, but I just-
Unless you have a seeker determination, you're supposed to use the new form. I wasn't aware of that.
It was a very minor change, so just when you make the seeker packets, put the new forms in.
Can it just be the change, the entire form didn't change, it's just the page, right?
It was like one or two pages.
One or two pages. It is papered throughout. All right, sorry.
All I'm saying is, when we do seeker circulation, have the new forms for those packets.
Right.
And one for the file.
And one for the file. We want to make sure that we're not somehow sued and losing a procedural defect, that we didn't have the right form.
Even though the application came in prior to the date.
It supposedly says that, I'm told that-
Unless the negative acquisition.
Unless the negative acquisition, you have to, I know, it's New York State, Kelly. As you know, it's New York State, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask, going back to lighting, I'm fine, you know, the height, and I understand and I agree, but I would like to ask if we could take this opportunity to match the base that's concrete with the color of the post, so it's a much-
Oh, to paint them?
Yeah, so it's just uniform?
That is something we require now, so they don't, you don't see the concrete base.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. That's it?
Anything else? Okay, good, thank you very much. So, Liz, do you, can you email, do you have your letter done or not? Okay, so when you get it?
We'll, we'll-
We're aiming for the end of the day Friday.
No worries.
I won't leave, I will be shackled to my desk.
Thank you, it's nice to see you, as always. And I'm never going to stay for the next portion of this, the hospice part of the site plan.
He's on the board of hospice.
And Chris is maybe in the queue.
Because it's J one side.
Isn't there a button on the bottom? It's on the top.
You could push it and hold it.
So, we have Mr. Kaminsky. Yes, it's working, Mr. Berger. Mr. Kaminsky is the CEO of Hudson Valley Hospice. Mr. Bayright in the audience is on the Board of Directors, I believe it's called. Mr. Berger is the consulting engineer. And Mr. Berger, I'm going to turn this over to you. I think I'm making the same sound.
No.
Maybe if I turn this off, it'll help.
It's fine.
He's going to need it.
I'm going to need it over here.
All right. Could I just?
Yes.
Take two minutes out, just to-
Take your time.
20 minutes.
We're televised here, so consider it a free advertising spot for your business. You think I'm joking or not? I know.
That's sort of counter to what we do. Let me just take two minutes out to explain how we got to this point. We've been renting this building for over 20 years, from the Pages to Conic Realty. They had originally built it for us. We've been the only occupants of it. And it's kind of silly for a corporation, even though a nonprofit corporation, to continue to rent a building when there's no expectation that we're going to go out of business. So, we were able to put together a financial package that was attractive to the board of, our Board of Directors, and made an offer to the Pages to purchase the building. We're fortunate that they accepted that offer, without realizing all of the ramifications that that caused. And we appreciate the board entertaining our presentation, and in effect, coupling our application with the Page application. So, in any event, about three years ago, we had an average daily census of patients, about 100 patients per day, for both Ulster and Dutchess Counties. We're the only licensed, accredited, certified hospice that service both Ulster and Dutchess Counties. We had about 85 people onboard, staff that we were paying. And over the last three years, because of the need to remove barriers for patients who needed hospice, we changed the culture of the organization, hired another 100 staff over the course of those three years. So, we've got 185 people today, taking care of 260 patients every day. So, that's the size of a hospital, basically. And it's spread, even though it's spread throughout Ulster and Dutchess Counties, we have four teams of doctors, nurses, chaplains, social workers, volunteers, aides, all as required by Medicare and the New York State Department of Health, to come together once a week in a big room to discuss what's going on with their patients. So, four times a week, we've got teams of professionals coming into the facility to discuss any changes that any of their patients need. And that creates a fairly significant problem. Some of those teams also have required additional managers, additional clerical support, additional finance people, additional medical records people, et cetera. As the number of patients increases, there's ancillary staff that need to increase, that need office space. So, working out with our architects and engineers, it turned out that we could fit a 4,000-square-foot abutment expansion on the east side of the building, which is what is being proposed here, which also obviously requires, if you've read the site plan, you've seen that there's a detention pond that's in the way of that bump out, and we'll have to deal with that as well. And with that, I think Joe can address some of the issues that Mrs. Axelson raised. But first, let me say, for the board's purpose, I did provide the, my authorization to sign off on the application, which was approved by the Board of Directors at a meeting about, I guess about eight months ago.
Thank you, and I can just assure you that everyone up here has read the site plan, don't worry.
Good evening, everyone. Let me start by describing what we're doing, and if I may, and these extra comments from Tad, Kathleen Moss, and I could step through them. But basically, the existing building, you know this there, the addition's going to go to the east side, the rear, which forces us to-
Joe, can you hold the microphone a little closer?
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Even closer, wow.
Well, no, there's a lot of rattling of papers and, okay, thank you.
So, the additions on the east side or the rear of the building, we are going to relocate a portion of the pond to the east, by keeping the majority where it's at, which will require steepening the side and put a retaining wall inside of the pond, but pretty much keeping the pond in its same condition. We've done the stormwater analysis and provided to Town Engineer to review. We're also having additional parking over, which would be the northeast side of the building, to provide what we feel is the additional parking we need, which swings back around to what would be the eastern side of the site.[1648.06] The issues of sewer and water, you've already discussed in the subdivision, so I won't go back over that because that has to be resolved, basically. We're trying to disturb as little possible the site. So we're going through some of these questions. The zoning, some of these are the first ones, this is only forty feet maximum. We recognize that, you know, we're gonna beat that. There's a comment of infill green infrastructure needed. We basically have a large green area in the back with the pond. We're not sure what exactly the Board would like to see additional for green practices for such a developed site.
Can I address that real quickly? On the west side of our building, there's a memory garden. And we want to extend that memory garden around the south side of the building. So it'll obviously be landscaped. We are looking at landscape architects now to develop that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you not hear me? Are you kidding?
No, I can hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we'll, we'll be using a landscape architect to design an extension of the this planting area.
Since I know you're in a rush, landscaping is part of site plan, so you'll need to show this as part of your site plan.
We will have that shortly. The question, the question I would bring up is, green practices are not usually defined by gardens. They're defined by stormwater treatment.
Correct.
So what we would like to do is get some clarification and hope that since we're under the one acre and we're really not doing a SWIP, we're just doing erosion control in a site plan, that there'd be some relief to that and allow us to create this really nice memory garden, which landscaping versus building a rain garden out there, which, as nice as we show them on our maps and as nice as everybody pretends that they look, they really do not turn out all that great.
They look kind of like nature untamed.
Yes.
This is not an area where you need to have nature untamed.
Good way to describe it. I'd rather see a very nice-looking memory garden, which we will have on the next plan. And we're working on that.
I think that, to me, that personally sounds great. There's a Tad comment, by the way. I'm not even sure all the Board members have seen Tad's comments you have.
Yes.
Basically, then, the easements, we've already discussed. Stormwater treatment, we've basically have presented the stormwater plan. The key is, we're basically relocating that pond a little bit. And we did the calculations to show that everything pretty much works. There's a comment by Tad about the park can be close to the property line, and that is true. The parking is actually crossing over the parking line. But this is a, I think of this as one big plaza, not separate parcels, because we're gonna have cross easements. There's no way not to have the cross easements, and there's no way not to have the parcel, the prop, the parking the way it is without major change to existing site, which we're trying not to do. So we're looking for some relief on that requirement. There was discussion earlier about the 350. That's a general rule of how you calculate the 350 per parking space plus aisle. Based on this property being already developed, it's hard to do. What we were able to do, as Tad points out in her letter, it was 720s for our particular site. We were able to knock that down to 512. To actually knock it down to the 350 would make a, I think it would become a difficulty to do that. We tried to do the best we can without ripping up everything and without making it overly costly just to come to a number. We felt that a relief, as long as we provide proper landscaping, would be in order. Green infrastructure, we talked about on this. And then this goes to landscaping, again. There's a requirement, whenever you have an area of parking, to have fifteen percent of the area within the parking be landscaped. And what we have is, and again, it's looking for a relief because it's an existing site, we have a long area of parking. And what the requirement is, we can't cap this part here because it's not between two areas of parking. So you would have to lose several parking spaces. Now, what that does-
I personally am going to tell you right now, you've already heard me. I want you to lose the parking spaces. That's, that's an expansive asphalt, that's not going to look good.
Okay.
And people who park there deserve to have some shade periodically.
Okay, all right. That's fine.
I might add too, because you're going to be having basically cross access all over the site.
Okay.
If people need to park on another lot, they're going to be able to at the time because you have, it's basically still gonna be treated as one plaza, as you said, based on the easements, as I understand it.
Well, what that does, I don't, I agree with you on that.
I'm sorry, step so fast, but-
No, I agree. What that will result in doing is we'll increase our 512 up because as you, you take an amount of impervious, and then you divide it by the number of spaces. When you lose four spaces, that 512 sneaks up back up to the six.
I'm willing to get it back up there. I'm willing to make that trade. Grant you more relief in one and not relief in the other.
What's the trade?
When you, when you take away parking space numbers from the total impervious area and then divide it by the number of parking spaces, because there are less parking spaces, that, that square footage per parking space goes up from 512 to 600. I'm just trying to point that out so that when we make these changes to lose several of those spaces to give the landscaping and our numbers sneak back up, it's understood why it did. And not to, why did that go back up? Because it's a domino effect.
For me, it's just a matter of aesthetics and functionality.
I think my client would agree on that. We just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, sure, sure, sure.
We see this site plan coming to you for the first time and willing to make modifications as your input comes.
Thank you.
And the last comment, and I think it comes to the cross easements. We realize the storm circle goes in and out of the property. That's what would be the purposes of the cross easements. Our east property line was placed here, and the easement around here for parking specifically was done for only one purpose, to keep the sanitary off our site, so there was one less complication. Had we drawn this-
But it still goes onto your site.
Not the sanitary.
Yeah.
Not the trunk.
Well, okay, not, well, if I'm following the right line.
You may be following the storm.
It goes down and then it goes back up?
The sanitary is here. And it's to the east.
And that, no, it goes there and then it goes to the left and then to a V here.
This one here is lateral, it's not a trunk.
Oh, so that's, you're calling that a lateral?
That is a lateral. The trunk line would be defined by this right here. That would be a feed line coming into it.
Are they different sizes?
It starts south from there.
They have to be different. I assume they're different sizes.
Yes. But even if they were same size, one would be lateral feeding, the other one's a trunk line. There's only one trunk line. So depending, that's why we did it, whether, I'm just giving you a rational, rational why we did it, to keep the trunk off.
So then this easement is going to be granted by Teconic Realty to you for the purpose of, of just back, like having a backout area?
We drew it there because we weren't sure how they were going to accomplish the cross easements. It may disappear with the cross easements accomplish the same.
Okay, because one of my questions is, I couldn't tell with, if this was for the line or for the?
It was for, because physical parking spaces were being built on someone else's property. But we recognize if the proper cross easements are provided, they may allow us to build that without having a definitive one. But I wanted to make sure, at this stage, we put them on there so that conversation could go forward and it didn't just slip through. Because I want everybody to know that we're, we're building new parking spaces on property that we don't own. Now, this will make the cross easements take that into consideration. If it's done properly, to the Board and to my client's satisfaction, we could remove that line. I see that as a, something going forward.
So the only purpose for that easement was the parking and the landscape?
Yes.
That's it.
And we feel it probably can be resolved in the cross easements. We just want to make sure it does. Because there's so much going on in the site, if we don't point that out, it's overlooked at the end and then someone says, why do you have parking being built?
This will be reviewed by your attorney as well.
Yes.
That's what I'm gonna spare this in mind, right, as well as you.
See, my thoughts were that the cross easements may start concentrating on existing paving and existing parking spaces only. And if this wasn't brought up, then we couldn't construct new spaces.
So this is, this is one of the reasons, I, I mean, you heard me tell Kelly earlier, we need some kind of easement plan or easement narrative saying what all the easements are gonna be and how.
We agree. We did this specifically so that our construction on the property that we didn't own or weren't gonna own needed to be brought into the conversation. Because without that, it could easily be overlooked, the easements, everybody would look at it in an overview.
There's a grass island at the end of your parking space too, that looks like it might be on the other lot.
It is.
And is that existing or proposed?
I believe that's, that's proposed over there, yes.
Okay, so that, I mean, that's another location where you would need to indicate an easement unless?
Unless the cross easement deal with it. Yes, we understand that.
Okay.
But that was the whole purpose of me creating something so the dialogue would go forward on construction versus existing.
I was just confused where it said by others. I wasn't sure.
Because we're not doing the survey work on the site. That's being done by the subdivision. We are the engineers on this site.
So not other applicants, just?
Others, meaning the surveyor who is doing the subdivision.
Okay.
I'm not the surveyor on the subdivision. Otherwise, I would say by me. And that, basically, you know, we're here to listen to more comments.
Ms. Axelson?
So, I, I pulled out comments dated October 9, 2018, that I had issued regarding the review of site plan and subdivision for Teconic Realty. And I guess I had the understanding that Kelly was gonna forward those to you guys? So that kind of answers that question, because here's what happened. So I looked at the plans that were submitted and I started looking at, these were comments I had done for Teconic as a whole, including hospice, of course. And I immediately could see that most of them weren't addressed. Some are not applicable. So I think the thing to do next would be to create a review memo that's basically anything.
Only that's relevant, right.
Anything that's relevant to your site.
That's what we were expecting.
Okay. And, you know, I think what I'll do is attach the overall memo so you have an idea of context.
We were, yeah, we thought of our site plan and initiated review later.
Well, I started to, but obviously I went to, you know, why reinvent the wheel? So I went to the comments that, for some reason, I thought you guys might have had, which you didn't.
No, we weren't at the meeting and we didn't get that fish. We didn't get it off the record.
Oh.
It's, it's, it's a-
Yeah, we had asked Kelly to send it to you, so that you could.
I actually got it from a Board member.
Can you talk into the mic, please?
I'm sorry. Oh, I apologize.
Okay. All right. So I'll, I'll have to just create a new memo. I'll update it if I see anything updated in here.
I was gonna say, there are some minor changes, not minor, there's some changes that were made from what Kelly proposed as part of the site plan to what they have. So you just need to update it based on the changes, on the delta.
So I'll have to do an updated memo and get that out. I mean, for Friday, I won't leave my office until-
You're chained.
All of it's done. Or Monday morning.
Since we know we're gonna be adding the landscaping for, for the removal of some of the spaces, and we're gonna be adding the memorial garden, and we're gonna be able to do that quite shortly, would you, would it be more preferential to wait to review our modified one, so reduce the time?
Liz, do you want to respond to that? They're gonna make some changes from this plan.
Based on tonight's meeting, we're gonna modify the plan.
Well, can I, I didn't really get into the substance of any of mine, if I could give you a few.
Okay.
So should I not, you know, maybe not do a review of this? So, so let me just tell you. So obviously, we are asking for more landscaping. Labeling existing trees and wooded areas, for example. One that was specific to yours was a landscape buffer at the southern site boundary along School Street.
Right.
Yep. Let's see. And then the idea was to create landscaped areas or label existing landscaped areas along the Route 9G frontage. The general comment was add trees, shrubs, or other plantings. Obviously, highlight if you do have the memory garden where that is, because I could see. We're looking for small pedestrian plazas or patios on each lot, which I believe that memory garden might, you know, so if anybody is at hospice, they are welcome to go there. Let's see. Reducing parking was another one of the comments. The westernmost five to six spaces on proposed Lot 1, which is hospice, may be eliminated in front of the hospice building and landscaping added. So that would be.
Yes. The ones, the parking spaces closest to the road, sort of in, in front of the front building line as it corresponds to Route 9G.
The eight spaces.
Yeah, there are about eight spaces there. Or as many as you can move.
Well, those are, those are part of the spaces, the few spaces that are closest to the main entrance.
Okay. Well, that was one of the comments, so. Let's see.
Mr. Kaminsky, have you gone through a site plan review process before?
Yes, actually, I have in New York City.
Oh, it's a little different there. They have community boards rather than planning boards. Ms. Axelson's comments are aimed toward us and they're, no, 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 they're aimed toward you but toward us as well, and it's up to the Board to say, yes, we want to enforce that, or no, that's a good idea, but not in this case. And Mr. Berger will be probably saying to everything, no, not in this case, it's a bad idea.
Yeah, I mean, let's-
There's conversation.
In other words, don't think that everything is an ultimatum that you're hearing here right now.
I'm actually used to yelling and screaming at these kind of meetings.
No, there's no yelling or screaming here, sorry.
We don't see that.
None.
Very mellow.
And these, again, I'm just, rather than creating a memo for you from the past, telling you what things pertain. We were looking for more pedestrian connections, so I had add a crosswalk from the median's central walk to the hospice building. So you have kind of a median in front there, and it looked like you could use a crosswalk. It says, concrete walk.
That's the chairman's comment, too.
Extend the concrete walk west of the hospice building to the site's frontage. There's some existing concrete walk on the western side going towards 9G, but it just kind of ends. So if you can extend that to the site's frontage, that way employees can come and go from the bodega across the street. Add a crosswalk at the site's southern driveway, which is you guys. In other words, the overall site. So a crosswalk along your driveway. Let's see. We were asking to have this labeled as a healthcare facility. We asked for each building to be labeled as to use, so this one fits in the zoning as a healthcare facility. And then we need parking calculations, which I see that you have. But we had hoped it would be based on medical clinic, which is the parking requirement that's closest to this use.
This is in more than administrative.
I agree. I don't think this is a healthcare facility. It's an office, yeah.
So this is office?
Yep.
It's all administrative.
Well, that would be helpful. That would be helpful to know. So it would be labeled as office, okay. Scale calculations, which I, I think you know about, labeling dimensions of-
Just, I'm gonna cut in there.
Okay.
So you provided a scale calculation based on the conversation we just had earlier with Kelly Leibert.
You understand that. Now, it's gonna have to wrap it in.
We need it, right. We need the scale for the whole site.
You need to scale the whole site and how we proportion.
And then some proportion. And so, you know, if they give you the insurance agency's proportion.
I understand.
Perhaps you have enough scale.
We need a conversation with them and-
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Scale is common to both and we can't have them done separately.
Right, so the, I mean, so the, the other thing is you asked for a waiver, and we, the Board doesn't waive scale. There's the opportunity for them to issue a special use permit for an expansion up to fifty percent of whatever your base is, or-
And remember, some of that's already been exercised.
Right, some of it's been exercised.
I didn't know, so I understand that.
Anything above that is a variance.
Yeah, we understand. So we're gonna start with the overall calculation, decide what's allowed. See what's allowed and see how it's proportioned between the four lots.
I think you want to, I think you want to negotiate with Mr. Page back there to say, we'd like, as much as we can get, to not have to do the variance.
Yeah, we understand that.
Because there's only so much we can give. And beyond that, you have to go, and I believe that the way this works is we would have to give the special use permit first before they could, could they have to get the minimum required? Or would that be?
You know, that's, that's under discussion, but yeah, the Board usually asks you to get this. The zoning Board usually asks for the special use permit first before they grant the variance.
It's like letters for signs. Whatever dimensional increase we can grant, we do before they get any other, okay. Internal stuff, don't worry. And Mr. Berger understands this too.
Yeah, I understand that.
Scale is unique to Hyde Park and?
Yes. Any other comments from your prior memo that you want to highlight, Ms. Axelson?
Label the typical parking space eighteen feet long by nine feet wide. Let's see. No, we're not. They're gonna do a submittal first, isn't that what?
Well, that seems to make sense to me that, that you would make your revisions and then have a new comment based on that.
Because now they have your prior comments. They have your letter.
Right. So I'm just trying to point out what pertains. I mean, is it okay if they're not sure what pertains or not to just give me a call?
Yes, of course.
Let's do that.
Joe, Liz offered that if you aren't sure which of the prior comments are relevant or remain to this application, just to give her a call. But I think you already figured that out.
Because I already sort of circled whatever I think needed to be done that wasn't done.
So it wasn't our choice to see which was typical, which was appropriate?
I can keep going.
No.
Okay, see?
Thank you.
Down.
No, no, it's just, if it's a recitation and they have a copy, then he can just call you and find out what's there.
I agree with that.
Thank you. Mr. Zataro, any comments?
Yeah, a couple. So, so Joe, on the stormwater pond, you're showing a, you're showing a four-foot-high black aluminum fence, right?
Yes.
The only thing is, you do have one labeling in the, I think it's the southeast portion where it says, proposed retaining wall with fifty-eight-inch-high black aluminum fence. What's the, is that just a mistake? It's supposed to be forty-eight, maybe?
I think that's a typo, yeah.
Okay.
That's a seven, seven, eight o'clock at night mistake, maybe even eleven o'clock at night.
So, I see where the fence, where the, where the, where the black aluminum fence ends when you get to the timber, the timber rail in the front.
Yes.
I think it, I think it would look better if the fence went all the way around the pond. And then if you want, you know, the guide rail in front of, in front of the fence. I, I mean, it's really up to, you know, the planning board, but I, I personally think it's gonna look odd to have three sides with the black aluminum and then the front.
I agree.
You have a little piece of wooden rail there.
Just match-
Again, that's more of a aesthetic thing.
I think, I'll ask every Board member to weigh in, but I think that's sensible.
So the other thing is, on your, on your retaining wall, and I understand why you're doing it, to try to get, you know, the volume. And the stone-strong wall obviously is not an impervious wall. So I guess I'm not really sure where we're gonna be going with that. I mean, we don't want you to put in a concrete wall in there because it's gonna cost- I mean, we don't want you to put in a concrete wall in there because it's going to cost a lot of money. But, you know, your volume, your volume calcs are based upon not having any water permeate through the wall and where, and where the, where the, where the blocks are stacked on top of each other. There's going to be like water infiltrating in through there, but.
Yeah, but it's no different if it would infiltrate into the gravel or stone on the side either.
We'll work, we'll work, we'll work through that. So the other thing is, I was just looking at the parking, and the last five parking spaces that are, that are on other radius there towards the back, towards, you know, the east. It's, it's kind of a, and I don't think that that back is going to be the primary, like, exit. But I'm not 100% sure. But for those last five that are on, you know, the radius, really, once, once the people get out of their cars, they're going to have to walk right in, you know, the drive aisle to get over to where you first have a sidewalk, which is right in front of the addition. So in my opinion, that's a little, like, dangerous, and I don't, I mean, I don't know if you have enough room to put a sidewalk along other curbs so that the people could get out of the car and get onto a sidewalk rather than having to walk in the drive aisle such a long way to get to the building.
You're thinking of a sidewalk on this side, all the way down?
I mean, I know it's tight. I mean, I know it's tight.
It's very tight.
I think if we pushed the, if we put the fence onto the side of the sidewalk into the front of the pond. If we move the fence down this way, we have our four feet, so we could do that. I could accomplish that with some minor changes. So I could, I could put a four-foot walk there.
Sidewalks have to be five feet now from ADA compliance.
DOT laws, four feet.
It can be, it can be four, except every.
Number one, this isn't DOT property.
Every couple hundred feet, every couple hundred feet.
If you have a bump out.
Yeah.
Yeah, or some, but I, they're less than.
These are requirements because you have, you need to play, for, if people, for the rare people who are in wheelchairs, they need to have room to be able to turn around, et cetera, and you can't do that with a four feet.
But you could do that with a bump out, that's what I meant.
I see what you're saying, okay.
Yeah, but you're only going to, I mean, you're only.
We're not going to have that far. And our handicapped spots are going to be way over here, too.
You're only, you're only, you're only going to be about 110 feet until you get to the sidewalk where the addition.
Quite honestly, the one-foot difference isn't going to make it. I could make it a five-foot walk, to be quite honest.
I mean, if you can fit it, that's, you know.
I believe I can. I believe the, the, the shifting of the pond, the two extra feet I need from here to here, two feet, is not going to make a difference. And I could put the five-foot walk there and the fence right on the side of it, so that you got the, the view, and then you got your five-foot walk.
Okay. That's it for me.
Chairman, can I say something?
It's not a public hearing.
There's been comments that Kelly never sent.
What, come up.
No, no, I said she did.
She did. Joe said he did not receive.
I just said I didn't receive.
Joe, there's an email here that was sent to you. And it was carbon copied, Liz. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that Kelly did send it.
I didn't say, I didn't say I didn't see.
Okay, well, it's right here. I'll send it to you again.
I didn't say she didn't send it. I just didn't see.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure the record.
We're not impugning Ms. Leibert's professional reputation, I assure you.
I was asking, I looked at that.
Microphone.
No, sorry. I was copied on the email that Kelly sent, so I knew that Kelly sent it. I was just saying that, based on my review, it looked like they didn't have them. That's all. So I'm sorry. I didn't mean to imply anything.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying that.
That's enough.
Ms. Pardaro, comments?
I've injected.
Well, yes, I know. Ms. DiNapoli, comments?
But of course. Thank you for reconsidering increasing the landscaping, which I think is critical, as I had stated earlier when we were talking about the deconic reality. This gives you an opportunity to freshen up the area. Times have changed, and it would be nice to have some more greenery in Hyde Park. This is purely a curiosity question, none of my business, but I want to ask it anyway. Is there a reason why you chose to go out instead of up?
I assume the, the building is already constructed. It was the cost to go up to another floor.
Generally less expensive.
Not really, not when the building was built on one story.
With the structure.
So you were going to have to change the entire structure and.
And the foundation is, it's not there. Yeah, we did talk to our architect about that.
It was just curiosity.
It would be, it would be pretty much a rebuild of the whole site, of the whole building.
I might add, that's not a bad question to ask, because a lot of people have asked the same things before to me. Why didn't they just do this? Because they can't. The cost of, in other words, for a while, there was a discussion of adding a second floor here to the town hall, and we looked into it, and it would be cheaper to just tear the whole thing down and start all over again, because the footings were built for a second story.
And that's it here. And also the disturbance, even if you were able to do that, you'd be disturbing the site for the entire area of your building, and you'd need to move somewhere else. Here, we could be building this while the site is still being occupied.
That's a good question.
It is a good question.
It was a way of solving the parking issue and increasing landscaping, because you weren't going outside your footprint. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm okay with having the fence be the same material on all four sides.
Thank you. Mr. Waters?
I agree with the comments that were made specifically by Michael, especially with Michael regarding the giving up some parking spaces for green area. I think, I think this, some of this will, it'll make it, it'll help beautify the facility and make it more attractive. The fence, you know, we, a lot of the issues were raised that I had seen, the wooden guide rail, changing that back to the aluminum, so it's consistent. I think that's pretty much it for now, that I, you know, looking at it, can we, I see the next one, the revision, so that we can get into it a little bit more. So, thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for taking the time to look at that and notice that the wooden guide rail did not match with the, the rest of it. Ms. Wasser?
Yes, thank you. I agree with the comments thus far on the increased landscaping. I think that's very important, and the parking. My comments, actually, I know your architect isn't here, but my comments are actually addressed to the elevation as well. On the west elevation, since we are talking about improving the overall appearance of this, of everything we're looking at, really. The west elevation has fewer windows, very few windows, and small windows, and metal cladding on the exterior. And I understand designing inside out, but we're looking at it outside in. So I'd like to hear your comment on that.
This is where a site visit would help, because the building currently has the metal cladding on the side. And the, the occupancy of the east side of the new building is storage, delivery entrance, some file spaces, you know, that kind of thing. So it, we didn't need a different kind of, we didn't need large windows in that area.
Well, I underst, that's again to my comment about designing inside out for your function, but I'd like you to really look at that again and see if you can, I, I just think it looks odd.
The other.
To the whole building. And you said it's metal cladding elsewhere, but you also have a lot of EPIS.
A lot of what?
On the other, so EPIS, the stucco.
Yeah, that's right.
Stucco, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
But not, yeah, not on the east and south side of the building, currently. So we, the architect basically tried to make the new space look like it was already there.
He has. For better or for worse, he has.
Exactly, exactly my point. So I still don't like the way that east elevation looks. I'm in the west, so I'm going to leave my comment.
You're saying the west, the one facing the road?
Yes, facing 9G.
Yes.
Oh, you're talking about the one, the elevation that's closest to 9G? Well, that exists.
Looking from the pond at the building.
Oh, yeah, okay. I was, I was just, I was talking about the right.
That's the east elevation.
Right. It's the east elevation looking west.
It's labeled west elevation.
J7.
Which would be facing 9G.
But it's mislabeled.
It's looking west.
And also, it's not visible from 9G.
Right.
It's not visible from anything other than.
The pond.
The pond, right.
Well, that was a huge confusion, because I kept looking back and forth on the plans and saying, that does not look.
Where are we?
We'll, we'll talk to our architect.
Because the existing building.
Thank you, thank you.
Is it right there?
Yes.
I'm blind for a moment. The existing building is here.
Correct.
The expansion only goes that direction.
That's correct.
But it's labeled as its own exterior elevation.
Right. So the architect mislabeled it.
Thank you for that.
Because they're not making, proposing any changes to what exists, and that's what faces 9G.
Yeah.
No wonder.
They're all wrong. I think there may be an issue with labeling, because I'm looking at the south elevation.
We just agreed on that. We just agreed on that. Any other comments? Ms. Wasser?
No, that's, thank you.
Yes, I'd like to reiterate, to focus on improving the green infrastructure, and in particular, the plantings between, and the improvement between the building in 9G and the building going out, looking north towards the parking lot. Again, plantings, trees, whatever you can do to improve that. The plantings in the memorial garden, that's kind of a private area, but. Memorial, memory garden, same thing. Anyway, but what you do, you say you're going to go around the south side of the building, while you could, you talked about improving the screening on the south side. So whatever you do in that memorial garden could kind of focus on that screening there. And I agree with Pete and the colleagues on having the same fence all the way around the pond.
Thank you.
So what do they say from the road list?
Ms. Weiser?
I have nothing to add.
Do you agree with prior comments from your colleagues?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Believe it or not, I don't have any additional comments. It's a rarity. Merely because everything, well, everything got mentioned. I do, I want to emphasize that, they were basically Liz's comments. I think some more crosswalks are required. You're just painted to show pedestrian connections. And I do think that Pete's comment about the parking spaces and the curve or the radius in the back, I think the sidewalk is a great idea. You're right, you're walking right, otherwise.
Did I just add something today, Michael, while you're there? Joe, I think you've got plenty there, room, because it seems like your parking spaces there by the pond are actually, actually 20 feet. And, you know, our code is, our code's nine by 18, and the drive aisle there, right in that pond area, is about, is about 28 feet. So I think you've got plenty of room to pull it back a little and, and get, you know, your sidewalk in there.
Microphone, microphone, microphones.
Yeah, what I did was, I didn't want to change the new parking spaces to be nine by 18. I think we can still make it.
You're creating, I mean, on that one, on that one whole side, those are all new parking, so even if you just made those nine by 18.
Okay, I mean, I was trying to keep all the consistent, but I think we have room to pull it back. I agree with you for sidewalk. But, I mean, I'm more than willing to listen to the board on changing the spaces. I just thought.
Well, it's nine by 18 as a code. I mean, I don't care what you do. I'm just saying that you had, you, that if you, if you want to, if you want to go to nine by 18 for that, for that row, right in front of where, you know, the pond is, and, and, you know, you're already, you know, the drive aisle there is, you know, already wide. You should have, you should have plenty of room to put, you know, your sidewalk in and not have, you know, crunch everything, but.
Yeah, they're consistent with what's there. We're trying to be consistent with what's there for just the few we're adding, but we can work with that.
Well, that's up to you.
No, we can work with that. I appreciate the comment.
Earlier, there was a request, I think, from Ms. Axelson to label the parking stalls to make sure that they're nine by 18. You can just label any ones that exceed that, so we know. I should add, these may not be nine by 18, just so everyone's aware. Ms. Axelson, these, the existing parking stalls may not be nine by 18.
I understand that.
The prior code was 10 by 20.
Yeah, they're not. They're all 10 by 20s.
That's what I thought. So we just need to make sure that, that's aware, because the town center north, from like the Amish Market, et cetera, we discovered those stalls, built about the same time period, are the larger size.
Yeah, 10 by 20, yes.
Yeah.
And just, just a point there, I understand you don't want to go through the expense of, you know, redoing the configuration, but one thing to think about is, if you have a row that are all 10 feet wide and 20 feet long, and they only have to be nine feet wide, you could end up squeezing another parking space in certain places by restriping. So that's just a thought.
Say that aloud, say that aloud.
Yes, that, that would help with the green space.
As well.
Because we're taking spaces away, but we might be adding some by reconfiguring the size of the spaces.
So you've heard comments tonight, you're going to make some revisions. I, I know you, you can't turn a dime, but you think you can get these done pretty quickly? I knew it. Good. So as soon as you're ready to submit, just let us know. We'll put you on the agenda for the next. I mean, I'm not sure, you're going to proceed a little bit separately from the other three? If that makes sense? I'm looking at Victoria for procedural. We can proceed with this site plan somewhat separately from the other three, correct? Whenever they submit, they can?
They don't need to be on the same agendas, if that's what I'm asking.
That's what I meant.
But they're, they're tied by.
Because of the subdivision.
Function of the infrastructure and the subdivision. But sure, we can look at them on different nights at their own pace.
So whenever you're ready, we can get this on the agenda and circulate.
Yeah, I told them.
Okay?
Appreciate it. Thank you for your comments.
The rest of the board is not aware of this, although I am. You are on a time constraint?
The, when we, we're under the aegis of the New York State Department of Health, which requires any healthcare facility to apply to it for approval to do things like purchase a building, expand a building, et cetera, et cetera, which we did about a year, a little over a year ago, and the New York State Department of Health, they give us approval on the condition that we were able to begin construction by October 1st of this year, 2019.
Given the complexity of the conditions that will actually be added to this approval, assuming we get to an approval, I always forget to add that.
The biggest issue is going to be the water and sewer.
Right.
So.
In other words, we can process this as fast as we can, but you're still going to have conditions which would likely involve the water and sewer connections. Usually, the easements aren't always prepared either by the time that we get through a thorough review, because there's different layers of reviews of the easements by different parties, attorneys. So these are traditionally made as conditions of approval, and I can't sign the site plan, which means you can't pull a building permit until all conditions have been met.
That's a good point. If the legal agreements are submitted before you get approval, it does go quicker, because when you submit them after the project's approved, then we have to get, you know, two different attorneys to look at them, and because they're not on an agenda, they're not getting priority.
In other words, if you guys can work out, if all parties can work out the easements, the legal, all the legal agreements, the earlier the better, in terms of trying to meet your goal, your deadline. Mr. Kaminsky, I think you did say that there might be some little room, meaning if there was appropriate action by the planning board, not necessarily an approval, but showing that you're making good faith efforts to proceed, you might be able to extend your certificate of need.
Well, I can't speak for the Department of Health, but I would certainly take wherever we were in the process of getting the approval from the town back up to Albany to explain to them why we needed extra time.
I guess what I'm trying to tell you, I should phrase this more simply. If there's any way I can help you by a letter from the chairman, stating where you are and what the process is and why there's been delays, I'm happy to help.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
This is, I do these things ministerially, sometimes too often, to explain why things have not moved forward. But I also do them for things like recommending early liquor licenses, you name it. Your planning board chairman appears here to help. So, Mr. Berger, you know what your marching orders are. We'll wait to hear back from you. If you need to have an offline meeting in the interim, just let us know. But I think, you may not need it. I think you heard pretty clearly what, what you're looking for. I appreciate your forbearance. It took all this time. Thank you. Look forward to seeing you come back. We're going to take a two-minute break, if you guys don't mind, so I can get some water. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Saki Brewery. The applicants have proposed making some minor modifications. We reviewed them, sent them to county planning. We had no comments, and now we're ready to take action tonight, because we closed the public hearing. Who has this file?
Which one?
Saki.
That's me. Resolution granting site plan amendment approval for Saki Brewery, April 3, 2019, Resolution 2018-25F. Whereas, now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby grants site plan amendment approval to the amended project as shown on the amended site plan set, and authorizes. and authorizes the chairperson or has authorized as a need to sign the amended site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, satisfaction of all conditions of approval for the conditionally approved site plan as stated on November 7th, 2018, and resolution 20-25C and is modified on December 5th, 2018 by resolution number 2018-35D.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries, thank you. The next item on the agenda, on the agenda. Hyde Park Town Center North, buildings three, four, and five. If you recall, we've heard back from county planning. We have a resolution prepared. County planning recommended that we did not put in the three lights, the three gooseneck lights to the right of the building. That's, that's all, I spoke to Ms. Levarnway, I said, I think that's not going to fly. I think that everybody thinks it looks balanced and symmetrical. And if you read her comments, she was just afraid that by having lights above what could appear to be an entrance, meaning a floor-to-ceiling bank of windows, that could cause people to walk over there. My reply was that first, the parking is over on the side where the door is. And she did, by the way, she thought it was appropriate to put the sign above the door. And I said, the only person who might be stumbling toward to go into the fake entrance would be someone, I guess maybe sick from something around the south. And I think if they bounced their nose off the window, they'll still find the entrance. Yeah. So, but I wanted to make sure that we
They won't do it twice.
Yeah, right. But I wanted to make sure that we somehow raised that issue. Does everyone, occurrence that we like the idea of the lights staying on both sides?
Yes, we do.
We do.
Yep. Who has this resolution?
I do. Resolution to approve an amended site plan, Hyde Park Town Center North, buildings three, four, and five. Resolution number 16-151? Or is it 15L?
I think that's, that's 15L, I believe.
Yeah. 15L?
Is that 15L?
Resolution 16-15L?
Aye.
It is aye, capital I, sorry.
Okay. 15I. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby approves the amended site plan and authorize the chairperson or is authorized as a need to sign the site plan after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, extension of the sidewalk on the eastern side of the property to meet the location of the proposed town sidewalk. As approved by the town engineer, be it further resolved that prior to authorization of certificate of occupancy for building five by the zoning administrator, the applicant shall paint the canopy and supporting poles on building two a neutral color, such as brick or tan, and otherwise restore the canopy and poles so that they are in good condition, free of visible rot and peeling paint.
So I have just two items for discussion. In number two, it, it should say revision of the site plan set to depict the extension of the sidewalk. So Cynthia has that added. Second, if you want to choose a color, we can do that tonight so that we're not leaving them as much discretion, it's up to the board. I didn't know what the board was looking for.
What does, what does brick mean?
They did have a note on the plan.
Do you mean brick by red?
I thought they were proposing to paint it brick red.
They had a note on the, on the plan that just said, paint the, I don't remember exactly, paint the canopy and the columns to
To match the brick.
You know, the brick on the building now, that's
Should we revise this to say a neutral color? Or one that matches the existing brick?
Or one, okay.
I thought when the architect was here, he has suggested that they would paint it all gray.
Yes.
Because it would then blend in with the other buildings.
When he was here discussing the Verizon sign, and we discussed it then, he was going to paint it the same gray.
Including the brick, the whole building?
The whole building, so I didn't, I didn't hear that.
Wait, wait, so, well, they can, so as long as we just say a neutral color, that can be the gray that they're interested in painting it? Or one that matches the existing brick structure, brick exterior?
Fine.
Because I don't think we want it brick red.
No.
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 It says brown. So the, it's currently said it's going to be painted brown, which I suppose would be neutral.
That's the brown brick. The brick is brown.
Brown is not a neutral.
But the brown that is there is a, is a, the brick is a brown color, it's not a red.
Okay. It says brown to match the Verizon.
Do you want to have a gray canopy on a, on brown brick?
Have them paint the whole thing.
That's what they're proposing to do.
They are, I didn't realize they were proposing to paint the whole building.
That's why I said
No, no, they're not.
They're not.
They're not going to paint the building.
The architect, when he was here, suggested painting the brick and the canopy. The reason why he suggested painting the brick was because of the graffiti?
That didn't make it onto the plans, though. So he may have suggested it. But unless that is in here, that's likely not going to happen.
It won't happen. I'm guessing. So what is the board happy with? Do you want it to specify color, like gray to match?
Gray.
Yes, yes.
Changing this again, shall paint the canopy and supporting poles to the gray color that met, a gray color, a gray to match
Verizon.
We need to communicate this to Joe because they're moving pretty fast or
Yeah.
Built, it's, which building would that be, building number?
Two. Oh, you mean to match, match, is that three or four? I think it's
They're all the same color, aren't they?
No, because four's not done yet.
I want to say it's three.
I think it's three.
Well, we can't just say
Well, let's pull the site plan out.
Thank you.
Well, the, you could say the Domino's slash like Verizon building, right?
Yeah.
Barbershop, Verizon, Domino's building?
Oh, gosh, that's
I think it's three, but I'm not sure.
Three is the one that's just been done, right? It goes, three, no, because five is emergency one. It wasn't on the property. All right, do you have the site? Sorry. Let's just do this the right way.
Before we vote, before we vote
Oh, wait a minute.
We still
Wait, she's going to be writing here in the file.
Emergency one, but it might have
Your mic doesn't have
It's to match, oh, it doesn't.
No, I thought it might be the bigger one.
Big five.
Do you want to go on the stats creed?
While we wait, let's jump up to do Stats Creed Lot Line realignment. The applicant's here have requested a 90-day extension for final plot, special use permit, and site plan. The reason why is because there were still some legal documents that needed to be filed. And they made this in a timely manner. So who has this file?
I do.
Thank you.
Resolution to grant 90-day extension of subdivision and site plan approvals, Stats Creed. Resolution 2018-26C. Whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore be resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant a 90-day extension of time in which to satisfy, satisfy the conditions of subdivision and site plan approval to and including June 30th, 2019.
Second?
We pause before a vote.
Wait.
Ms. Whitman?
I got it.
Was the fee, was the fee submitted
Yes.
For the extension? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. Motion carries unanimously, sorry. There was some resistance upon the part of the applicant to pay the fee for the extension. Said, well, then we're not going to vote for it.
The Verizon building is number four.
Yay!
Yeah, we were wrong. Well, you had started and then it went around. Okay. And then emergency one became part of the property and they added
So the resolution then would be revised to say the canopy and supporting poles to a gray to match building
So building four has multiple colors on it, right? It does, it's white.
A gray that matches the gray on building four.
Okay, there's only one dark gray on building four, fine.
The gray utilized on building four.
It is, but it's a gray.
Fine. I guess I should have looked at color samples. They didn't follow their color samples.
So the resolution has been revised. Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Yes. Thank you.
I think Rob might have took the other file with him.
All right, did this one?
Oh, no. Wait, wait, I have something. Hold on. I have them.
You have it?
I have all, I have all resolutions.
No, 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 the whole file.
Oh!
Because it was all together.
Cynthia, Mr. Waters appears to have taken the file for Corey and Neshawat.
I have Corey and Neshawat.
Oh, you did?
No, for Cream Street Solar.
For Cream Street Solar.
No, I brought it in.
Oh, okay.
I did during the break.
Thank you.
Do we have a second on that one? Which one? I just missed, did we vote on this one yet? I missed the second because I was
Yes, I seconded it.
Stephanie seconded it. We next have an application for a site plan waiver. This is for an in-ground pool located at Hyler Drive that will not be visible from the river or from the historic sites. Who has this file?
I do. Town of Hyde Park Planning Board, Christine Corey and Stephen Neshawat, 22 Hyler Drive. 6066-04-749136, site plan waiver. Town code section 108-9.4C2, April 3rd, 2019, resolution number 2019-11. Whereas, a request for site plan waiver has been made to the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board by Christine Corey and Stephen Neshawat to construct a 30-foot by 45-foot in-ground pool and spa in the rear of the existing single-family home, whereas times five. Therefore, it be resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirement for the file entitled Christine Corey and Stephen Neshawat.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion carries. That's a big pool.
It is.
It is.
I have it there myself, so I know this is a, that's a nice size. That's, this is big, yeah. The next item on the agenda would be the comments from the town board, to the town board for the core rezoning. I received comments from several board members. If anybody has anything additional to send me, just send me your thoughts. I printed out the two that I have so far. And by the way, I have 180 emails that I have not gone through yet, so I may have more. My apologies, I got swamped by some other activities. But what I'm going to do is take the comments I have and incorporate Victoria's, assuming that you all agree with Victoria's comments.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for ably doing those, as always, Ms. Paul Darrow. And I will come up with a letter to be sent to the town board that I will send out to each of you that we can vote to allow me to send it at our next meeting. I did request an extension of time. I haven't heard anything from the town board.
I think, well, they canceled their last meeting in March, so
That's why. So they'll have to grant it to us, but I believe that knowing how we work with the town board, I don't think there'll be a problem.
They have a meeting Monday.
Good.
It's coming Monday.
Good. Then I hope that we're on the agenda for an extension of time in which to respond. Then, the last item on the agenda, has everyone had a chance to see the Renaissance Rehabilitation sign?
Mm-hmm.
So the ZBA has a new chair, Mr. Bickford retired, resigned and retired because he and his wife left town. Mr. Sweet is now the chair, and we had some back and forth. There before the board, the ZBA, because they expanded the size of the sign. To reiterate briefly, we were given, we were shown a sign that was also sort of under being erected construction. And they made, they made, they, Chad walked them through the site plan permit application process. They made it, we gave them the dimensional increases based on what we could for the R. They had to get a variance. In the meantime, they erected the sign, but they never filled the signed permit. It was a sign that was different. Somehow, subsequent to that, they decided to take down that sign, even though it was relatively new, as in less than three years, and put up the big lavender purple version you see now.
Royal.
Again, yes, without any approvals or permits, et cetera. Mr. Sweet wanted to get a comment from us. Now, technically, all he's reviewing, all that they are reviewing is the dimensional variance, the increase in size.
Well, the size, right, the total size of the sign.
The total size, which seems substantial to me because it's, it is a bigger sign than what's allowed.
And it's right on Route 9.
And it's right on Route 9, that's what my comment was. So, but in my discussion with Mr. Sweet, I did sort of opine that personally, I'm going to find it very hard to vote for a sign of that color that has no material there's nothing harmonic or consonant.
It's incongruous with the rest of the buildings.
Yes.
The purple does not, that's
Mr. Sweet said that they offered, when that comment was made, I guess he relayed that to the applicant. They said, well, we'll just put up purple canopies or awnings where they're marooned. And I said, I hope that Ms. Moss requires site plan amendment for that because that's also not something I'm going to support. We don't need purple out in this area of town. This is supposed to be a rural area. I'm not really sure you need purple signs anywhere. But certainly not out sort of in the countrywide area. So what would the board like, they're expecting a comment letter back from us. So how would you like me to proceed on this? This is the ZBA that would like
And what is the comment they want from us?
Can you first, how far beyond the waiver limit this is?
Yes.
Eight by four, yeah, I know, but I, I, yeah, sorry.
So the maximum square footage is 30 square feet and they're expanding it. They want, they have expanded to 36 square
It's an additional six square feet.
And then also for the individual letters.
So it's two by three.
Yeah. But I might add, this is right on the road. This is right on the road. It's not like it's set back and needs to be seen more.
Or obscured by rock.
And I, I
And on what basis, they need it that big?
I don't mean to be rude, but you're talking about a company that just went through the process and then put up another one anyway. This is truly a case of asking for forgiveness rather than permission in advance.
Right.
And I don't like doing that because it means that the people who go through the process correctly asking for permission somehow are penalized because
I agree with you, and I think the sign's big enough for the purpose that it is.
So as I understand it, they're asking for comments, but those comments would not be limited just to the size? The variance, they're asking us for aesthetic comments as well?
I'm, I wasn't at the meeting.
Oh, that's right, you're no longer their attorney, Mr. Logan is.
Well, I'm still their attorney, but
Remember your phrase, that the firm is the attorney. But you don't attend those meetings anymore.
I've had a two-month reprieve. But I am still the zoning board attorney.
Okay. So would you like me to respond that we do not approve of the, or we recommend against granting of the additional size because of the proximity to Route 9?
I totally agree with Stephanie's assessment that there's really no need for something that big on Route 9.
They just kind of went outbound with everything.
A good description. And shall I make comments as well about
And the color is not
The color seems inconsistent with the character.
It's inconsistent with the character of the town.
Okay.
Both the size, the color, again, the whole, they just took it upon their own to
They're not meeting again until after our next meeting, if I'm correct? So I have time to prepare a letter, show it to you all, and you can then, at the next meeting, vote on authorizing me to send it. This is my, this is our April 3rd.
We have one more meeting.
So we have one more meeting before they meet, because they meet once a month on the third, I mean, the fourth Wednesday, where the third. Okay. Thank you for providing such clarity, and I do mean that. And as always
You should not abuse the process. Be rewarded for it.
They didn't even
With you. I'd also like to, before we, before I adjourn, I'd like to go ahead and set up a site meeting. So I'm going to send out some dates, everybody, to meet on, for the
Which one?
The, yeah, Teconic Realty. I've already walked it again, and I had some definite ideas where I thought pedestrian connections could be improved for hospice. But I also had some ideas, I didn't know they were going to be doing this memory garden around the way. I had some ideas for that area, too.
That's a very private area, though. I mean, and it's not visible from the street or whatever. So to me, that's on their own, but that's why I mentioned you could use that back area and put the screening on the south side.
I agree.
But it's interesting that it's a pure office use, and they have the memory garden tucked in the back of an office use where patients' families don't even go.[1699.61]